Feed. Okay, good morning everyone, members of the board in particular. Welcome to the February meeting of this board. I'll start by asking members of the board to introduce themselves. I won't ask the officer at this stage until we reach the relevant point on the agenda. So, starting with you councillor Martin.
Hello councillor Lisa Martin from Roundhead Wood.
Morning everyone councillor Nicole Sharp from Temple News and Ward.
Just remembered in time.
Good morning everyone councillor James Gibson, Cross Gates and Wimmo Ward.
Councillor Paul Wood just in time, guys, I'm Rodden.
Councillor Neil Buckley, Old Woodley Ward.
Jonathan Bentley councillor for Wheatwood.
Councillor Bob Gettins representing Moreland North.
And I chair this board and I'm also councillor for Middleton and Bellisle.
I'm just waiting to see whether Mo would like to very quickly introduce us, I'll move on. Okay, moving to the agenda item proper. Agenda item one appeals, I'm not aware of any. Agenda item two exclusion of the public, there are no items for which this is applicable. Late items, there are no late items. Declaration of interests, I'm assuming that any members who do have a pecuniary interest or other interests will have declared them. Agenda item five apologies, we do have an apology as I say for councillor Asane and councillor Gibson is substituting. We've also had notification this morning that councillor Goddard is unwell and we obviously wish him a speedy recovery. So, moving on to agenda item six, the minutes of the last meeting of the 19th of January, that's on page five. And in usual fashion, I'll go through them page by page. If there are any corrections or any matters arising, please shout out as I go through the individual pages. So, page five. Page six. Page seven. Page eight. Page nine. Page 10. Page 11. Page 12. And page 13. So, if there are no corrections, no matter arising, all board members content for me to sign these as a correct record of that meeting. Right, thank you very much. Takes us on to agenda item seven, which is the annual update of the local flood risk management strategy. Just very quickly to remind members that we do have a corporate duty every year to look at this particular document. So, it's one of those that's landed on our agenda from above, if I can put it that way, rather than one that we necessarily choose to put on the agenda. But it's always, I think, a very interesting issue, especially in the past when we've been meeting in the aftermath of some rather savage storms. And I'm going to ask Jonathan to introduce himself in a second. And perhaps one of the first questions he could answer is whether there's been any impact of the weather over the last few weeks and particularly this week. So, Jonathan, if you could just introduce yourself and then I think you've got a short presentation to give to us.
Thank you councillor Trusswell, yes, I'm Jonathan Moxon, I'm the council's flood risk manager. Is that coming through? Okay. Yeah, okay. There we go. I'm not in focus, there we go. And yes, I have responsibility for flood risk management across the city. I've done a few slides just to give an overview of some of the key work areas that we provide coverage for in the city. And an update on the sort of activities that we've done in the last 12 months against the strategy that we published originally back in 2012. And then we refreshed it in 2018. We only refresh that fully as a strategy every six years, but we do, as councillor Trusswell said, we bring it here to scrutiny every year just to provide an update on the activities that we've done. And obviously any key incidents or issues that have arisen in that year as well. So, I'll run through that when I go through the slides and then happy to take any questions on the report itself. Would you like me to touch then on the sort of recent storms and weather first before I do the slides? I'm a bit nervous saying this, but I think it's been okay. So, that's always, yeah. We're always a little worried in flood risk management that saying too much about the weather. But actually, yeah, the current storm and the next storm, storm unit that will come through on Friday, they're named storms because of the wind. That's how the Met Office stills tend to name their storms, it's due to the strength of the wind. And this is, they're both UK named storms, they're not always, so you might have seen different names in recent weeks that were named by, say, the Irish Met Office or the Dutch Met Office. So, it depends on where the storm was first named as a storm. And then it might subsequently hit the UK or it could generate and just affect the UK just. So, yeah, I think it sometimes feels like a mystery to people why they're called certain names like Dudley. But that, those names are set at the beginning of the year, but they're only used if the storm actually is a UK generated storm. But it's mainly wind effects this time, so there can be knock on effects to flood risk. If we've got trees and debris and watercourses. Obviously, we've two very important pieces of infrastructure in the city centre that are movable wares. If we get large trees on the wares, that's a significant problem for the city. So, we watch the weather, whether it's raining or it's windy, we're always watching what's going on. But at the moment, the city's in a decent, decent state from a flood risk perspective. Okay. And next slide please. Thank you. I've included a slide here that just tries to sort of zoom out and look at global impacts of climate change. So, I think I'd like to probably talk through flood risk management in the context of climate resilience and adaptation. So, we talk a lot about net zero and the targets around reducing carbon emissions. But the impacts that climate change will have will be very significant around the impacts that we feel in terms of weather related and climate related risks. And flood risk is the biggest climate risk that we're city faces. All this slide really demonstrates is that just, just within the last 30, 40 years, we've seen a significant increase in the number of meteorological storms or weather related storms in green. And then hydrological events are what we would call a flood or a sort of significant mass movement of water and they're the blue ones. So, it was just to highlight that. Next slide please. That's all right. Yes. Thank you. So, focus more on Leeds now. And this is, we, we have the ability to monitor and track rainfall across the city. We have a system called MapRain that provides us with really detailed assessment of rainfall in the city. And then we map that each month against the long term average in the, in England and Northern England. So, it's, it's just to highlight really what the last 12 months have been like. What I would say is the sort of January and then, and May figures are actually very high, if you can see that, in comparison to the long term average. We didn't see, we did see large impacts in January and it's probably not that obvious to see from the grid. But the big difference we see is that if the preceding months have been very wet, then, then a heavier rainfall in that month does, does create large scale problems across the city. A one month on its own, so say May, where it's been surrounded by drier months, then that buffers that impact. So, it's quite important to sort of look at that, that one month on its own of high rainfall doesn't necessarily have very big impacts in the city. It's that cumulative effect. And I'll touch on that a little bit later. If you cast your minds back to 2015 on Boxing Day when we had catastrophic, you know, biggest flood we've seen in Leeds in history. That was months of rain, you know, that wasn't a single day, it wasn't Boxing Day being really wet. That was months of rain that had a cumulative effect. So, it's just to highlight that difference. Overall, last year has actually been a relatively average, uneventful year, but we did have a number of events in February. And we're still sort of dealing with the after effects of them. Next one please. We capture incident data, so this is just a flag, this sort of, this is the type of granular data that we hold. So, we track that by month, we can compare year to year. So, there you can see 2021 being relatively significant, higher, probably fifth highest year that we've had. But when you compare that against 2015, the bulk of those incidents were from that festive period. Whereas 2021, you can see there, the bulk of those incidents were in February. So, that was. I was going to say it was Storm Care, but it wasn't. That was, that was the year before. It was actually not a named storm, but it was actually extremely significant in terms of its incidence. So, next one please. We, we do a lot of spatial data planning, so this just, we plot the incidents across the city. So, the yellow triangles are individual incident records and the red ones, dots are just from the sort of January this year, just to show you that recent incidents in recent weeks. Incidents can range in severity from internal flooding being the most significant thing we would record through to sort of nuisance flooding of the highway or nuisance flooding of gardens and outside areas. What I'm trying to show here is there aren't that many parts of our city that don't receive the impacts of flooding. So, and you probably see that, that as many ward members are in touch with my team about flooding on a regular basis and it is quite widespread. We do have concentrated areas round the north west and the south east of the city and maybe along the sort of Wiltley and Whitebeck corridors. But actually, other than that, surface water risk is, is present all across the city. Okay, next one please. I also want just to highlight that one of the biggest areas of influence that we have is in the planning system. And I think often people's initial response is that development is bad. And I think it's important that we, we put that in context that actually, as a flood risk manager, the biggest tool I think I've got in influencing development and reducing flood risk in the cities is probably not the £100 million flood scheme that we're currently implementing along the Kirkstall corridor. It's the many, many hundreds of millions of pounds that developers are spending developing the city that we, we have to assure and, and, and in effect, mark the work of the developers with respect to their flood risk plans. So, I have a development control team that technically assess all the drainage plans and flood risk assessments for every development across the city. So, just highlighting there, we get sometimes as many as 200 applications to assess in a month. Some of them are small, but some of them are many hundreds of houses, you know, hundreds of houses on one development. So, it's, it's a huge role that we play. And I, in my opinion, I think that's the biggest tool that we've got in our armoury. Next one please. Just, just to sort of recap on some of the things that we've done in the last 12 months. The picture there is, is construction of the wares on phase one of the flood alleviation scheme in the city centre, that's at Nos Drop. They're now complete, but we've been doing a lot of work this, this year using diving contractors in quite difficult conditions just to continue to improve the technology that we use. So, knowing the height of the weir, both in peacetime and in a flood is critical to the success of, of what the wares are there to do. So, they're raised normally to allow navigation through the city centre and then we lower the wares by letting the air out of the rubber ladders in, in a flood to create more space. And the blue box in the bottom corner is a little piece of kit that's caused us lots of problems in recent months and that's called an inclinometer. And it's a posh way of just telling us what the height of the gate is. But if you can imagine that there's three metres of water over the top of that gate, at least in a flood. It's quite difficult to make sure that we know for a fact what it's doing, so it's a really important piece of kit. So, we've been doing some modifications to make sure that that piece of equipment is heavily protected and it works in every circumstance. And to do that, we've had to make some modifications to the scheme and we've done that with diving contractors, which is quite involved. But it shows the sort of extent to which we have to look after these key pieces of infrastructure. The top two pictures on, on the right, we, we don't ride around with tablets, I just picked a picture. But it's just to emphasise that we do do inspections now and we're trialling the technology, mobile technology, so that we're trying to be a little bit more efficient. And we're capturing information on the fly. And what it means is the Beck inspectors that we have looking at all the watercourses across the city have got access to the latest incident data and asset data while they're out on site. We're only trialling them at the minute, but it is actually proving to be extremely important. And I think, I think it's something we really want to see happen in the future. We've just moved to a quite sophisticated asset management system called AMX. And I think it will, you know, it'll underpin a lot of the investment decisions that we make around our assets in future and make sure that we're sort of taking a risk based approach to managing watercourses like the picture that you can see there. Next one please. Just to highlight some recent schemes, I will have touched on this previously, but the scheme at Killinbeck represents the type of flood infrastructure that we're really keen to see. So, we, we planted thousands of trees on this scheme as well as reducing flood risk and as well as improving a local nature reserve. One of the things it did also do is, is enable housing growth. So, 13 sites along the Whitebeck were, were, were assessed in conjunction to see whether they could release their surface water directly into the watercourse. And I think that's the type of thing that if we've not managed that properly, that is what hits the headlines where a development's allowed to increase flood risk downstream. What we actually did is then took payments from those development, developers, not all of those 13 sites, some of those sites through the planning system, through section 106. And we're able to construct a flood scheme in the centre of that area that manages that floodwater. So, we've, but by doing that, we've improved that green space for the community. So, when it's not flooding, it's a really nice part of that part of the city. And when it needs to flood, it does and it fills full of water and then it drains away gradually, protecting the communities downstream. So, this is a really good example of the type of scheme that we really want to see. It might be animated, this one Becky, so you might have to see. I think the blue bit fills in just to. The image at the bottom is, is the infrastructure, so we, and it, it don't get any more exciting than that, I'm afraid. But the, the big structure in the middle is greened up a lot now, it doesn't quite look as concrete filled. But ultimately, that is a reservoir embankment, it is under the supervision of a qualified panel engineer. So, we do have the proper engineering, technical infrastructure there. But ultimately, we, we did focus on the green infrastructure and the way that people use that area as well. Next one please. This is a scheme that we only completed just before Christmas, so in the slide pack there is a link to watch a video that explains the scheme in more detail. It's not that obvious from the picture, but ultimately we've built an embankment. For anybody who's familiar with the flooding at Bilham Hill in Otley, it's happened a lot of times in recent years. Just 58, I think there was 58 properties and a couple of businesses were really badly affected on Boxing Day 2015. You imagine having your Christmas presents in your lounge floating around in floodwater, it was horrendous for that community. And the mechanism for their, that flooding in that event, we will protect against a flood of that size with this flood scheme. So, it's just over four and a half million pounds of investment. We've, we've had to be really innovative in the way that we've attracted funding for this scheme. It's a really tight and small site, but we've managed to maintain public access throughout the works. This below ground, because it's sat on sands and gravels, there's actually 15 metre length steel piles in the ground. But above ground, it looks like fairly small earth embankment with some nice grassed areas. And I think what we're hoping is that it's quite a nice area for the community to use when it's finished. But when it's in flood, it will do its job and it, and it'll protect that community. What we also did is an island downstream of the weir in Otley and we managed the vegetation, again, not always the most popular thing to do to remove trees. But the trees that were there were self seeded trees, quite large and prone to falling over. We will do a 10 year management plan on the island so that the vegetation is more sustainable. But by having smaller vegetation there rather than large trees that block floodwater, it actually reduces flood levels in a flood of the size of Boxing Day by 300mm. So, it's quite significant. We do build this proper hard infrastructure, but we also look at different ways to manage the risk. Next one please. This slightly different angle on this. So, this is some figures from Leeds flood alleviation scheme phase two that's taking place at the moment through Kirkstall and up into Carvelay. And this is actually emphasising the work we do around the climate emergency. So, we've looked at ways of reducing carbon, so through the materials that we use on the scheme and the way we do the activities. So, by setting some targets around a reduction of 10% around the sort of fuel and energy that we use by building the scheme, 20% around the materials that we use. We've been able to target activities and see those reductions. The image on the top right is sort of an indication, slightly different way of looking at this. And I think this is important, I'd like to see this on all our flood schemes going forward, is what, what is the carbon avoided by implementing the scheme? So, if you think of the carbon that comes as a result of the impacts that a flood has, it's huge. And then by protecting against that happening or making that less likely to happen in future, there's actually a carbon avoided figure. And those are the figures that are in that top corner. The embankment that were, or the structure that we're starting to build at Carvelay will increase the standard of protection through the city centre from a 100 year flood to a 200 year flood. So, actually a larger flood than we, we would have seen on Boxing Day. And that will be right through Kirkstall as well. But again, from a climate emergency perspective, we, we bought the land and, and therefore own the clay in the ground that we will use to build the embankment from. There will be steel and there will be concrete there. But on balance, actually, the scheme itself, when you take into account the carbon avoided by protecting the city, is carbon negative. So, it's just a different way of looking at the sort of infrastructure, rather than avoiding implementing infrastructure, it's important to look at the net cost of that from a carbon perspective. Next one please. I can't give you a next one, that's my last one. I thought there was another one. There you go, okay. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you Jonathan, could you turn your mic up? Ah, right, okay. Before bringing members in with their questions, I'd just like to welcome councillor Helen Ayden, whose executive board portfolio includes amongst many responsibilities, responsibility for flood risk management. Helen, I don't know if you want to make any comments at this stage or just respond to questions.
Thank you Chair, just apologies for, for being late, I had a phone call from the lovely Lucy in the Eden, so, and I don't, so, but.
I'm not sure that's a legitimate excuse.
It is in my world. So, yeah, but it's, I just want a huge thank you to Jonathan and the team. I took over this flood risk management aspect in May and I've been hugely impressed by the work that's, that's going on. And in fact, the, you know, that presentation that you've seen, I've shared at conferences as well. And we really are ahead of the game in Leeds when it comes to flood risk management, especially natural flood risk management. And I think that's really important when we come to tackling the climate emergency as well. Because, you know, we're a very long way from just building walls. And when you go down into the city centre, the use of glass panelling so that we, you know, to protect streets and buildings. But the fact that, you know, people can still enjoy our riverside and everything that, that has to offer and the sheer amount of fish. And did he mention our salmon, salmon ladders or is it otter ladders or salmon slide that I like to call it? I'm not, you know, so in those wares, there's an infrastructure for otters to make their way up the weir and for salmon to make their way up the weir and eels as well. So, eel elevator, I'm going to call that as well. So, but it's, it's incredible what just that kind of infrastructure that we can have, all the huge other benefits. And I'd like to give a shout out for mine and councillor Sharp's ward as well, that's protected by the Whitebeck improvements and that flood scheme. And when you talk to people who live in the Dunals, as we do, flooding is such a stressful thing to go through for many years after it would event. So, and, but the fact that we've got a fantastic nature reserve there now, the biodiversity, all the extra trees and a wet, that this flooding will, alleviation scheme will create a wetland instead of just holding water in a big pool. So, I'm hugely impressed and very grateful that we've got Jonathan and, you know, working for us. And, and it's really exciting what's going to happen in the future as well and the plans we've got for the future. So, thank you.
Thanks Helen, Jonathan will be putting in for a pay rise on the back of that. Neil, you've got a question.
Thank you Chair, I think we're all on the same page on this, aren't we? Because flooding is horrible and we don't want it and, and all the rest of it. And I thought Jonathan's presentation was very interesting indeed. And a lot of it obviously concerned big schemes and expensive works and so on. But he also mentioned the planning system. And I just wanted to sort of come at this very briefly from the other side of it, the other, the other end of it really. When new houses are built, there are regulations that the developers have to stick to to avoid runoff and all that kind of thing. But I know in my ward, I can speak from personal experience, you can use your eyes, that some of the big houses in certain areas, which were always quite big, have now been made huge. They've been developed. And quite a lot of the front gardens are enormous. And there are some gardens which have probably, which are probably now not gardens. And they probably have parking for 20 cars. And there's not a blade of grass in sight, nothing except tarmac or hard standing. And I just wondered what kind of regulations are they supposed to be following? And if they don't, what kind of enforcement we can actually make?
I think it's a really good question and I think, I think it is, it is an area we're already putting some work into.
So, that there already does exist planning guidance and, and, and a requirement to actually apply to the council to pave your, to pave your garden. And I think actually probably huge amounts of people in the city don't realise that that already exists. I think there's been some work that we've released recently, some communications work around just instead of saying there's a rule here, actually there's a responsibility for people to think about that. And I think we've, we've got more work to do on that in terms of trying to persuade people that they, they have a responsibility in this. Yes, it is your own home, but you can't, you know, you can't just make adjustments to your own home without considering the consequences to other people. And I think, I don't know if we would have the figures, but I think the percentage of gardens, certainly front gardens that have been paved and made impermeable, I, I think it's a large figure. And I think it's a growing trend and I, I do think we need to consider how, I don't think the guidance needs to be strengthened, I think it's there. And I think we've got the powers through the planning system. I think the awareness that people have got that that exists and our ability to persuade people that they have a responsibility to their neighbours and to others in the catchment is maybe where we need to focus our efforts. And it is a very important part of, of, of the makeup. In effect, you know, all, all sorts of small interventions across thousands of homes in the city cumulatively have a large effect, don't they? And especially on the scale that councillor Buck has just described there.
And we've recently, the planning director has recently published the garden guidance, it's a, it's a huge problem. I've just walked through Primrose Valley this morning and some, some gardens are really big on the Pool Estate. And it was lovely to see all the ones that were grassed and then there was quite a few completely paved over. And we're talking about quite big gardens here. So, I understand the need for parking and as a ward member, you get people wanting the grass verges to be paved over as well. And actually, that's when a conversation about flooding and surface watering flooding comes in. I know that there's some really good work happening around the Roundhead area about, is it water? It's the Yorkshire Water actually fitting rain gardens where our grass verges are going to be with the, to take the water that goes into Roundy Lake. I could be completely wrong about the engineering of that, but, and it's, and it's actually, so they're actually wanting to manage. And, and that's something that might go around the, around the city. But just being told that we can circulate the garden guidance for members because it is there. It was republished and updated last, in the autumn.
It was republished and updated last in the autumn. So but it is that awareness. That actually our gardens are not only, if you put them all together. A huge areas of green space that we need to protect and as well as our grass verges and things like that, but they do protect from flooding. And it's about that awareness, but we'll get that garden guidance circulated for members. Thank you.
Thanks, Helen. Before I ask Neil whether he wants to come back, could we just be clear about whether the planning guidance has any teeth? Because he did ask about enforcement, and I think it's a very important point. I'm surrounded by people who are tarmacking over their front gardens. I've still got the grass and the gravel. Two reasons. One, I'm a Yorkshireman and it's cheaper. But secondly, it's also environmentally far sounder. So. You know, does the enforcement have any tea? Sorry, does the planning guys have any teeth?
Jonathan answered that. Thanks.
I think planning enforcement is not my specialist area, but I think. It does, but we have to, there's always a balance to strike, isn't there? So I suppose if I make the comparison. With the enforcement powers that we have through flood risk management and the Land Drainage Act. Those powers are there, those powers are actually absolute and strong. Whether or not it's in the interests of us as a local authority to pursue that enforcement action. Is often the balance we have to strike. So if we were to take enforcement action against thousands of homeowners in the city. For incremental changes, especially when they've not applied for consent in the first place. It we have to balance the risk. And in an ideal world, they would apply for consent, they would be rigorously put through an assessment process and then they would implement a change. Quite often, people are making changes without providing any knowledge of that to us at all. And and they're on a scale where if you were to take all those, you know, if this was one. Landowner across a thousand front gardens, there's maybe a different approach we could take, whereas where these are all individual homeowners or tenants. It's even though the power is there, it makes it very difficult, I think, on the on balance. Justify the amount of resource in terms of financial and officer resource to to push through the enforcement route and. And that's often for officers, it's extremely frustrating, but I think that that is the reality of it, in my opinion.
Thanks, Chair. Just to clarify on that, the paving over of your front garden. Falls under permitted development, which are the rules set by government. But in order to to do that under permitted development, the material needs to be porous. Now, that still causes issues and it still causes some runoff. If it's not porous, you need to submit a planning application for that to be determined. The guidance that I've just shared with Becky, which she can circulate, is really positive. It's trying to be a bit more proactive rather than prescriptive. So we wouldn't be able to enforce that guidance, but it's really saying to homeowners, look, there's other options and other ways that you can park your car without actually leading to this runoff.
Okay, and you would hope that those responsible for installation might point these planning issues out to the to their customers. Neil, do you want to come back?
Just briefly, Chair, and you asked exactly the question I was going to ask, actually, because it's all a bit woolly. And of course, there are some people, we know that if you say, well, this is guidance, they'll just say, well, thanks very much. I'm going to use tarmac or whatever it is. I don't think it is satisfactory, but there we are.
Yeah, as Martin says, it goes back to our old friend permitted development. Katie.
Thank you. Can I also say thank you for a really informative presentation? Absolutely fascinating. So thank you for that. Particularly interested in the reference to the carbon budget, which. You said was going to be a feature of developments in the future, and I think that's absolutely spot on. The little comparison you had in the corner just made it really easy to see, so really welcome that. My question was about the report, but just something else that came up in the conversation about planning. I assume that for new builds, there is control over surfaces that are used, you know, it's. I appreciate your point of going back to people who were making permitted development in their garden, but. And that was just a supplementary to the question that had been asked before. My main question was, in the report on section three point three, it mentions. That. The impacts of climate change for all major courses, water courses across the city have now been assimilated, uploaded to a system. And when reviewed and finalized, that's going to be published by the City Council. And you state in the report that it's a really important tool, which it clearly is. So it's just a simple question, when's that likely to be? And if so, when you know, can we have notification of it, please?
So I think that relates to the strategic flood risk assessment. So yeah, that's a that's a document, again, that we do with colleagues in Martin's team, actually, around. So it's a sort of joint. It's a planning document technically, but we're working flood risk management and planning are working on that now. So it's been done in two stages. So there's a. There's national guidance set by the Environment Agency around doing strategic flood risk assessments. So we've been undertaking what we call level one. Which is a refresh of the sort of our understanding of the risk and we're just waiting for. For the Environment Agency to guide us in terms of whether they think that's compliant with their guidance, we think it is. And then we've got further work that we want to commission in the next couple of weeks that will probably take three months. And that's for the level two work, which is further modelling work. So we take the latest information that's out there. We're going to do some further modelling on that to look at the impacts of climate change in the city. So that what we'd have is a representative representation of the level of risk across the city at the moment. And then a representation of the level of flood risk and the extent of flood risk, which is quite important from planning perspective. With the impacts of climate change added in and that 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 needs more work before that doesn't exist for us to just represent. So I think the aim would be that. Come September, we'd be in a position where we've got a refreshed strategic flood risk assessment. And that would be then the sort of benchmark for our understanding of the risk in the city. We currently rely on a document that was produced some time ago. That said, we do a lot of bespoke advice and guidance between the planners and ourselves in terms of providing the latest information that we've got available. So even though. The published current strategic flood risk assessment is quite a few years old. We also, we still make sure that the developers got access to the latest information now. What the new SFRA will do is make sure that that's publicly available and 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 it's. A representation of the impacts of climate change because there could well be. Areas that are not currently represented as being at flood risk, but the impacts of climate change will mean that they are. And there'll be existing areas of flood risk that are. A more frequent risk of flooding or a greater extent of flooding because of the impacts of climate change. And it's important that we represent that. And that we're clear that we're building or we're making decisions that are future proof. Is that is that okay?
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. And then my other quick question was about new builds.
I think we perhaps need to call Martin back to the table.
Sorry.
Yes, we've got we've got much more control over new build housing. And actually, even going further on that control through the local plan update and the policies that were were taken through development plan panel at the moment around. Place making and climate change and flood risk, we can we can afford to be even more sort of stringent. In terms of the making space for water, I think is the phrase, the phrase that we use. So yes.
Okay, you're okay with that, Katie? Okay, I've not had any other, Jonathan.
Thank you, Chair, and apologies to you and colleagues on the board for being a few minutes late at the beginning of the meeting. Councillor Hayden mentioned the. Eel elevators, which I think I know as a fish pass. And as I've got Jonathan now, I'm going to take a slight liberty if possible. It's not quite in the report, but. Do we have yet an opinion on the viability of the fish pass at New Ley Way? Because we've got radio silence from the Environment Agency on the collapse of that way. And it's a real eyesore for residents down there. It doesn't seem to be doing anything at all, given that the river is flowing quite freely. Now that the weir has collapsed. Have we got an update on that, please?
I know we've talked about this previously and so I've been working with conservation and planning colleagues on this as well. The short answer is, we still haven't received the Environment Agency's independent, and I said that on purpose. Consultants structural assessment of the cause of the failure of the weir. We've asked for that several times. I've documented that recently, how many times I've asked for that report. We still haven't received it. What that means is that the weir is in a collapsed state. So that we've done some additional works, both. As part of the FAST II project to protect the current design of FAST II. And the Environment Agency have done some extra works to protect the flood banks. In the vicinity so that there's no increased flood risk to the residents in that area. But it's historic, it's heritage status is compromised currently. And the fish pass that they were installing at the time that it collapsed is isn't functional. Because it was designed with a functional weir in place. So the answer to the question is the fish pass functional? No, it's not, but it's still in place. The weir is still in a collapsed state and we haven't had a response from the Environment Agency with a structural report that's given given us an assessment. Of the cause of the collapse. The state of play at the moment is that. From our perspective, more through the planning system. From a conservation perspective, the weir has listed status, therefore should be reinstated. From a water framework directive perspective. And therefore, the Environment Agency's strongest perspective is that from a natural heritage perspective, the weir being collapsed is an improvement. Even though they've just fitted a fish pass. So there it's quite a complicated, as we've discussed previously, it's quite a complicated thing. And we have been taking some advice legally around which legislation. Would would trump the other legislation? I think the short answer is it doesn't. So therefore, there needs to be a discussion around the way forward. We were waiting for the report before we did that next stage of discussion and we haven't had it.
Thank you, Jonathan. If we can arrange something offline then, because I appreciate there's a lot that we can't say in an open forum. But I think collectively, we need to keep the pressure on the Environment Agency on this. So if we could arrange something in the next. Near future, it'd be appreciated. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Could I also ask whether you've involved the local MP, given the fact that the Environment Agency is a government agency? And I think he's now a minister in that department.
We have involved the MP and the MP was integral in the independent. Report being commissioned in the first place. So thank you, Stuart Andrew.
Yeah, maybe we need a little bit more pressure from all quarters. That's all that's all I'm suggesting. Wasn't trying to be party political in any way. Right, I've not had any other indication. Now perish the thought, no. Who? Moi? Three quick questions before we move off this this subject. On page sixteen, Jonathan, there's reference to the Potter Newton flood alleviation scheme. All the other schemes have got reference to consultation that's been carried out, but no reference to consultation there. My second point is on the following page, page seventeen, page seven, sorry, section seven. You've ticked the climate emergency box, which is absolutely right, and that's been a main focus of your presentation. But none of the others, and I would have thought that health, that you do yourself a disservice in terms of the work you and your colleagues and councillor Hayden do. In terms of health and wellbeing, because of course, as you've said, flooding is tremendously stressful, you can cut transport links. You're undertaking work to try and improve the ability of homeowners and tenants to get insurance. So all those seem to me to be health and wellbeing box to tick. Inclusive growth, I think we could probably talk about that as well. And my third point is on page twenty three, paragraph three point six. And it talks about the one in a hundred year level of protection and the one in two hundred year level protection. Have these calculations been revised and and reviewed? Because obviously, in the past, to some extent, major incidents have tended to invalidate or even discredit them. So, you know, have they been recast in. The light of fairly recent experience?
So the the first one, we've probably just done ourselves a slight disservice with the Potter Newton scheme. We were maybe just keeping it brief in this covering report, but there has been quite extensive consultation in that area. So we did. Did two public drop in events just to look at options and designs, and that has helped us to sort of guide. The option that we're currently still investigating for that area. So yeah, there's. So yeah, we've probably underplayed underplayed what's happened there. Maybe a similar thing for the second point. Yeah, I suppose I'm in danger of being a little biased. I think we do cover all of those areas and and I think it's a fair point that we could have, we could have said more about. The other two aspects. I think flood risk cuts across all of those themes. And as I highlighted with the Kilimbeck scheme earlier. We, you know, there's a health and wellbeing aspect to having a public green space available for people to use. There's a health and wellbeing aspect to reducing the flood risk and the damage that it causes to people. And it directly spoke to inclusive growth because it was instrumental in promoting housing growth in that area, you know, in a key, a key growth area in the city. So. Yeah, I think we've we've underplayed our part there, I think. The last point. It's a really good question, actually, and I think in my. I think we need a national level debate and I am involved in a number of discussions at the moment around. The language that we use and the parameters that we set around engineering sort of. Benchmarks for flood schemes. So we we cannot continue to use the same. Numbers and representation for a one in a hundred year flood. As we see the impacts of climate change take hold. I've got some work that we're doing with the Met Office at the moment. I think we'll retrospectively look at Otley. And say, well, if we if we talk about providing a one in twenty five years standard of protection at Otley, so. A four percent chance in any given year that that flood would occur today. Then if we looked at that in twenty fifty with the impacts of climate change, what would that probability be then? And and I think that's the work we need to pursue is that we've been able to. So I don't think we've seen the impacts of recent years change those figures that we quote. There could be an argument that maybe they showed, but certainly I think the models that we've now got with the. With the impacts of climate change added in, councillor Dyke's question earlier about the strategic flood risk assessment. You you would see it, we will see a shift. So we will say, you know, percentage chance of a flood happening in any given year today, this risk. A percentage risk of that happening in twenty fifty or twenty eighty with the impacts of climate change. Same chance of it happening, but different impact. And I think that's the type of thing we will we will start to publish and make a lot clearer. I know there's work going on at the moment that I'm doing with Polycux area around. A resilience and adaptation plan for the city, and I think this is quite a key theme that we. We represent the changes that the city is going to go through so that. The chances of something having an impact today are not the same chance. Not the same level of impact that it'll have in future, and we do need to plan for that and take that seriously.
Thank you, Chair. Just to go back to the point about the the council's three key pillars. This does cut across Jonathan's mentioned health and wellbeing and it's the green spaces and biodiversity. That that provides and how good that is for people. But also inclusive growth, when you protect an area from from flood. It unlocks that land, not just for housing, but for the for the for businesses as well and for the economy to develop. And we saw in two thousand and fifteen how many businesses were affected. And if we're wanting that inclusive growth and investment into the city, then we need to have that land protected. And so it very much underpins that inclusive growth, both in the housing, but also in the economy and the wider economy as well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jonathan. Thanks, Helen. I'm going to move on to the next agenda item. Oh, sorry, I thought you were indicating you were going, Bob. You told you told me that you were leaving at ten to eleven. Well, I'm sorry that we're changing over now, but I mean, if you want to make a comment, please do while the offices kind of take their seats. So I thought it was ten to eleven, you said you had to go. Yeah. Okay. We've got the main participants. Obviously, this agenda item relates to an update on inclusive growth strategy, which obviously is a cornerstone of what we want to achieve in the city in terms of including everyone in the city's development, growth and wealth. So if you could just introduce yourself for the benefit of viewers, and then I think, Eve, you're going to briefly introduce the report. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm councillor Jonathan Prior. I'm deputy leader of the council and executive member for economy, culture and education.
Good morning. I'm Eve Ruta, and I'm chief officer for culture and economy at Leeds to council.
Okay, Eve, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. So this is our third inclusive growth update report since the outbreak of COVID-19, and the report provides an update on the economic context, and also then goes on to set out examples of actions and interventions that have either been completed or are underway to deliver inclusive growth, and they are presented under the headings of Respond, Reset and Renew and Build Resilience, which were the three themes that we set out in our Economic Recovery Framework in October 2020. So I'm just going to talk a little first around the economic situation, because actually things are changing so quickly, there's some additional information to also enhance that, and then highlight some of the initiatives, but I won't go through all of them. So economically, the major trends that we're experiencing at a national level, and therefore in Leeds are dominated really around high inflation, which in large part is down to high energy prices, but there are other things at play. You'll note in the report that research by the Resolution Foundation suggests that the proportion of English households under fuel stress could leap from 9% to 27%, which is very significant, and that lower-income families will be disproportionately affected because they spend a higher proportion of their weekly income on fuel and food. So from a point of view of inclusive growth, it's certainly something we need to be keeping an eye on. The other major focus, of course, is the labour market. So employment levels in England are 600k below the pre-pandemic levels, and inactivity is up to around 200,000 in the last six months, mostly due to three factors: increased worklessness due to ill health, more young people in education, and more people over 50 stepping out of the labour market. Then if we just look at the situation in Leeds, there does continue to be a decrease in the universal credit claimant count, which is positive. So there were 460 fewer people claiming universal credit in December 2021 than November. And footfall in the city centre has actually been in line with the national average through 2021. So we have the figures for the whole of 2021 now, and we're able to make a comparison against 2019. And the situation was a decline of 37.4%, which was broadly in line with the national average, but bearing in mind that we were under a lockdown this time last year, January, February and into March, when footfall was declined by 80%. There's actually a positive side to that in terms of how things improved towards the back end of the year. And just to note that I checked this morning, and in February, the footfall situation has improved gradually. So it's been around 25% down on 2019 numbers compared to in January, when we were experiencing footfall down by about 30%. So we are seeing those footfall numbers creep up. Since we submitted the report as well, the Deloitte Crane survey has been published, and that sounds quite dull, but actually, it provides some very useful information about what's happening in the property sector in particular. So 2021 saw the beginning of a real turnaround, with development starts in the city centre in Leeds at the highest level since 2007, an 83% increase on 2020. 2021 also saw a record level of residential construction, and Leeds City Council is in the top 1% of English local authorities when it comes to delivering new housing, with 4,950 new units delivered in 2021. So that gives you a good sort of run-through of where we are on the economic context, and obviously, there's all the references in the report itself. Just to highlight some of the projects and initiatives that are included in the report, I wanted to briefly touch on COVID-19 business support grants. So there were new grant supports announced just before Christmas in relation to the Omicron variant. We were able to move very quickly on those grants, and we have processed those grants from the earliest possible date we could in January, and continuing to process those now. We were also able to reopen our discretionary grant fund and continue to process those grants with extra communications going on at the moment, activating through Facebook and social media to make sure that no business misses out, because those grant schemes will close shortly, because we have to process all of those payments by the end of March. Additional support provided around campaigns like the Eat Leeds campaign, and the work that was done to present the city as an excellent destination over Christmas really paid off in terms of seeing people coming and enjoying the city centre despite Omicron, including the ice rink on Millennium Square, which was the most searched page on the Visit Leeds webpage, as an interesting fact. Since the report was published, the Leeds Apprenticeship Recruitment Fair took place at the Leeds Arena, and it was hugely successful. We took it, we had people booking tickets for the first time, which meant that people flowed through very efficiently, and the businesses were very happy, and so were the parents and young people that attended. I'm pleased to say that we'll be running an event at the arena with a focus on send to allow children and young people that need a more quiet atmosphere and more support to attend a similar event in June. The website's also gone live since the report was updated. Quickly, under a reset and renew category, I wanted to flag that the Future Talent Plan will be going to the executive board in March. It just references spring in the report, so I can confirm that it'll be going in March. And also to note that good progress is being made in the area of green economy research, working with the Centre for Progressive Policy, and noting that that will come through and inform a refresh of the inclusive growth strategy. We've talked previously about the Social Progress Index here, and so you're all familiar with how that's going forwards. Finally, if you look at the resilience section, it highlights some major projects completed and underway, and some of these projects will provide fantastic opportunities to regenerate key areas in the city, including the project with the British Library around bringing temple works forward as the British Library North. I should also take a moment just to comment on inward investment. So we've been busier than ever when it comes to inward investment over the last few months, working with the UK Infrastructure Bank, working with the Financial Conduct Authority with Utterbury, and now also with major tech firm Cognizant to support them moving into Leeds. So whilst there are many challenges, you know, in the economic context, there's also a lot of reasons to feel positive for the future. Thanks, Chair.
Jonathan, do you want to add anything? Okay, I've not seen anyone indicate, so just wondering what, eventually when you get round to it. Can I just start off by asking for a little bit of elucidation on the Future Talent programme? Because it tells us a lot about the consultation, doesn't tell us much about what the components are of that strategy that I'm assuming will go and be approved at executive board, just to give us a flavour of it?
Yeah, of course. So the aim, so it does obviously note about the consultation, so I won't go into detail on that, Chair, since you're happy with that. What the aim of the Future Talent Plan itself is to make sure that we have something clear and simple, and also agile, that we and our partners can work with around delivering and responding to the labour market challenges that we've got. So when you see the executive board report, it sets out two key focus areas and a number of themes, and under those will be projects and initiatives that we're either delivering as Leeds City Council, or partners are delivering in relation to that. So we're currently working, we've actually got a meeting later on today, with those partners to run through that framework with them, and then from there, bring in their initiatives and projects that will contribute to it. So it's a work in progress, it will be presented through a website format, and the website will be launched in May time, because it's under development now, but that won't stop us starting to do work, both ourselves and with partners, on the different areas of work before then.
Yeah, sorry, Eve, but I think what I was asking for was some examples of the projects.
Yeah, of course.
Not the process, or has it not reached that stage yet?
No, well, we have got some areas of work that are firmed up and others in development. So the first example I would give you is that there are a lot of things happening around digital skills, for example, but we want to make that more coherent and to accelerate that work. So we have appointed an individual into the Employment Skills Team, who will be mapping the landscape of skills provision, and also supporting work to develop a week-long engagement activity to get around the city, to communities, to role model the opportunities that are in the digital sector, and potentially with a major event at the end of that linked to the Leeds Digital Festival to demonstrate the opportunities that exist. So that's not going to be targeted at people already in the sector, but people that might want to choose to move in. So that's one example. Another example would be a project that we piloted last summer, which at the time was called Build Your Future, but now shortly will be launched again with a different name, because Build Your Future is a programme that Leeds Trinity University use. So working with Leeds City College, we're running a sort of holiday camp to support young people to develop entrepreneurial skills, and that's a partnership between them and Nexus, and we're hoping that we'll repeat that on a regular basis, again, using the strength of partnerships between ourselves and the city. Another example would be the work that we're doing to make sure that we understand the green jobs area more. So it's a partnership really between economic policy and employment and skills, to make sure that we understand the opportunities. And again, we're looking to appoint somebody into a specific role focused on green jobs in the Employment Skills Team, to make sure that we get really clear pathways into those areas and developments. So just a few examples there, Chair.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much. I mean, I will hopefully speak for the whole board when we welcome those sorts of approaches. I suppose one of the challenges is how we take that out into disadvantaged communities and identify those people who won't normally engage unless you go out, you know, onto their territory and on their grounds. But I'm sure that that should be part and parcel of what we will no doubt hear about in due course.
Chair, just to briefly add, we absolutely will work hand in hand with the expertise of the 100% digital Leeds team, who are really, really good at that in terms of aligning to meeting people where they are, rather than turning up with a tech business and saying, isn't tech great? Why don't you go work for a tech business? I don't think that would be the right approach, Chair, so.
Thanks for that, Eve. Neil?
Thank you, Chair. And I think thanks to Eve, very interesting report, very detailed, et cetera. On page 45, there's reference to the removal of the national working from home mandate, which we all know about. And I think when lockdowns and so on first started all that time ago, some people thought, a little bit maybe lazily, maybe, that, oh, working from home was going to be the future, that all those who could do it should do it, and so on. And I think experience has told us that actually, it can result in lower productivity, lack of development opportunities for young learners, not able to learn collaborative skills, social skills, and all that kind of thing. And my first question really was whether, in view of the whole emphasis on what the city can do to help enterprise increase and go forward, what percentage of people here are now employed by the city council are working from home? And given that we anticipate that to go down, what target is there in place, and when will it get lower, and what will the figure be? And I've got two other questions, Chair, but if you want, I'll leave that to be answered first. Carry on? Okay, so that's the first question. The second question refers to page 46, and there's reference to the widening of footways, which happened, and we all know why, and in many respects, the opportunity for things like cafes and so on to spill out onto the pavement has actually been a good thing, and has given opportunities that weren't there before. But the actual practical manifestation of all this now is that we're in a situation where either take the horrible red barriers away, or make it permanent by doing some other proper engineering work. The city looks a mess, it's just covered in red barriers. And so that's my second question, when is that going to be addressed? Along with the appalling state of the ring road and the three-feet-high grass. And finally, Chair, page 51, reference to better health for people in general. And of course, we're talking about improving health and improving health equality, but actually, what's happened over the last 18 months, two years, is that people in poorer health have got worse, and people, the wealth gap has probably got wider for various issues to do with the restrictions. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, who's going to kick off? Jonathan?
I shall, yes. First of all, on working from home, I don't think I'd completely accept that characterisation that there was less work going on at home. I know plenty of people working home, working incredibly hard. Where we are now, obviously, there is gradual return to, not return to work, but return to offices from some. A lot of this work began last year, but obviously has been set back by Omicron. And actually, I think what we've found over the past few years is that perhaps working entirely from home or working entirely from the office, neither of them are the most efficient, and I think we'll be seeing much more of a hybrid approach going forward. Looking at my own diary this week, I had a number of meetings in the ward yesterday, but I was able to have meetings in the civic in between, because I was able to nip home, which was a two-minute walk away, log on online, have the meeting, then go back to the ward. If before hybrid working, I just wouldn't have been able to attend, I'd have had to choose which one to do. So actually, there are opportunities for more efficient working. We are seeing a gradual return to the offices for many people. It's not something we're pushing yet, we're letting people do it at their own pace at the moment. People have different levels of comfort with the virus at the moment, different levels of anxiety even, and that's not least to say kind of whether people are in more vulnerable categories. I do hope as we approach spring and summer, the, you know, the virus numbers will plummet even further, and it's a moving picture, it's something we'll keep looking at. But I do think the future is going to be a lot more hybrid, it's going to be a mixture of working patterns. I don't think I've got exact percentages on that that you asked for, I don't think we have those. On the barriers, yeah, Eve will answer this one.
Yeah, in relation to the barriers, councillor, do you want to let me know if you've got some specific examples, and I'll pick it with Highways colleagues, just to query that? And also, Chair, I'll just check what the position across the city has on that, because my understanding, which I'd have to confirm, is that many of them were actually withdrawn in terms of, because they were temporary arrangements. So I'd have to check with Highways colleagues about which remain and where in the city, and what the status of them are, and then revert in relation to some of that. So if there are specific examples, please feel free to let us know, and I'll pick it with colleagues.
Do you want to come back, Neil?
Yes, just briefly, Chair. I received an email yesterday from a council officer, and obviously, I won't say who it was, but at the bottom of the email was an imprint, and it reads, unfortunately, due to the restrictions on movement in relation to COVID-19, And it reads, unfortunately, due to the restrictions on movement in relation to COVID nineteen, Leeds City Council staff will continue to work from home. Therefore, this department's function is reduced and there may be a delaying service. And I've asked this officer to tell me what these restrictions on movements might be. And I've not yet had a reply.
I mean, I just suspect that that was an imprint that was put in when there were restrictions on movement that hasn't been removed. I'm not sure there's a, a great conspiracy here.
It, it, it sounds as though it is historic and I think we're perhaps slightly jumping the gun in that we don't know what's going to be said on Monday. So we're still operating under existing restrictions as far as I'm aware. But clearly it will be updated. There was, there was a briefing this morning, I don't know if you were able to, to attend it, um, councillor Buckley, where we were brought up to speed on all the work that's been done to try and ensure that we get a safe return to work and that people are encouraged where it is possible, you know, to return to work. So I think there is work being undertaken, but I'm not sure that it necessarily wholly falls within Jonathan or Eve's remit to answer your more generic question. But it would be interesting to see what answer you get, to see whether it is, uh, historic or that, you know, to ensure that it is updated as we move into a different phase of COVID. Yeah, no, no, by all means, you've raised it and I think, I think we're all interested. Um, but I think that we're now in that sort of unknown period between, you know, where we were and where we're going to be. Okay, um, Jonathan?
Thanks, Chair. Again, thank, thanks to Eve for, for excellent, excellent report and very good summary presentation. Um, I, I think that the, the, um, the story, the, the narrative around inward investment is one which is, uh, very encouraging. I was, I, I sat on the Combined Authority Economy Scrutiny Board and we had a presentation yesterday on inward investment and, um, the list of, you know, the list of wins and successes was, was, uh, very impressive. Unfortunately, I suppose from a combined authority point of view, everything comes to Leeds, nothing comes, nothing seems to be going to the other, um, the, 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 the other four authorities, um, and, and from a combined authority point of view, that is probably a concern um, from, from Leeds, it's probably not. Um, it, it does, yeah. Um, my question really was about, well, I've got a number of questions if I may, Chair, but the, one was about the, um, the return to the office and, and whatever. And I do think we've got to be careful about the words, not return to work, it's return to the office. Um, I, 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 I remember the teachers getting very, uh, when, when, when the teachers were teaching from home, getting very incensed. Quite right, when people were saying, oh, they're returning to work just because they're returning to the building and school, they'd been working probably harder away from the school than that they were before. Um, but it, it is that impact I think it's going to have. And we talked about inclusive growth in perhaps moving away from, um, the traditional centres of work in the city centre. And I agree, um, that I think we are going, moving forward in, in a hybrid sort of way. And there is evidence that working from home, um, working in a very flexible way increases productivity and increases job satisfaction because you can, you can have that flexibility around childcare and various other things. Um, but like, you know, wo- working in different times of the day if that's possible. So I, I think that is probably the way forward. But then the impact that has A on the traditional places where people work in the city centres, et cetera, um, on the, the office market, but also the businesses that serves those, um, that, 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 those workers. And then the other side of that coin is the impact on the local centres nearer to where people live. And if there is any evidence of those improving and moving towards that sort of fifteen-minute neighbourhood where people have got things closer to them, including their work, which is at home. So, so, sorry, so rambling sort of question, but I think you probably know where I'm, I'm coming from on that. Um, and the other thing, the, the other question, which is not really related, but it's this, um, phenomenon, I suppose, for want of a better word, that's come now with, with the move back to the office and lifting the restrictions of the number of people not coming back into the labour market, which I think is, is, is sort of the significance of that. One time it was a bit of noise at the bottom of the graph, now it's becoming statistically significant and economically significant. And I just wondered if you had any, any more to say about that, whether you thought it may, it may sort of pitch out again, or it, it, it was sort of a, almost like a, a post-COVID trauma that people, you, you, you know, didn't want to get back to work. So just some thoughts on that would be helpful.
Thank you. So just in relation to the first question, couple of evidence points. So, um, from the COVID nineteen discretionary grants fund, we know that there've been more businesses in city centre locations that have qualified for those grants in the second phase because of reduced footfall in key locations where they are heavily reliant on office workers. So without doubt, um, you know, if you, if you think about Wellington Place, there are some businesses there, for example, that are specifically there for office workers. It's that type of hospitality business that has had a prolonged impact on their, um, on their business. And we know that from the COVID nineteen grant stuff. So that's a little bit of an evidence point. The second evidence point about return to the office, I would say, um, that, um, in, in very, in competitive areas like digital businesses, Sky Betting and Gaming are currently advertising that you can work from anywhere to work from them. Um, and they're actually, uh, you know, promoting flexibility as a differentiator for them as an employer. Um, and, um, in the marketplace, it's very competitive to secure talent. So it, I don't expect, um, in some of those sectors that they will ever go back to requiring people to work five days a week in their, their office locations in, in an, in a sector like digital, which is really competitive. But what you do see in those office spaces, as if you go to, um, Sky Betting and Gaming's office in Wellington Place, for example, is that they have invested in very good collaborative working spaces, um, you know, cafeterias, event spaces. So that when their, um, employees are in the office, they're doing work that means they can do, you know, you know, connect with one another and, and so on. So that is sort of an evidence. I'm not saying that's what we're seeing in all sectors, but certainly in the digital sector, there's some interesting things happening in that respect. Um, on the, uh, question around, um, sorry, on local centres, I don't have any data points, but we did, um, look at this in detail in the paper we did about the future of local and city centres. And, and we will come return to that, Chair, at some point if it would be useful. Um, in relation to the labour market in, in activity, it's a bit like looking into a crystal ball, so I can't really give you a view. Um, there may be many things at, at play here. Um, you know, people, people decide, you know, COVID being a, a prime of people to decide to retire earlier than they might have planned. People not, you know, maybe kind of not keeping up with some of the changes in, in, in the workplace in terms of digital don't really, don't really have a firm kind of evidence base I could give you. But what I can say is that I think in our future talent plan, we need to think about how we can encourage people to get back into the labour market, even if it's on a part-time basis, because we need those people to get back into the labour market to satisfy the demand from employers, to ensure that our economy continues to thrive. So we need to think about helping people see the pathways they might go down to, you know, maybe retrain and go into a new area of work, um, and encourage people that, you know, um, if you, you know, you've got lots of time and lots of experience to give after, you know, in your fifties and sixties and even seventies, um, to give it, to give it to, to different working environments. So, um, I think that's something we will have to keep working on with partners and thinking about how we can address some of that. Um, and if you want those, uh, older, uh, the older, older workforce to come back in, actually, flexibility is potentially important as well because they're, you know, offering part-time roles, offering some flexes. It's potentially a way to encourage them back in. So, yeah, there's a lot to, there's a lot for us to be working on together as a city.
Okay, thanks, Eve. Do you want to come back? I mean, this, this is a kind of discussion we've had on a number of occasions when we've been talking about COVID and, and the measures that have been introduced. And I suppose it's a, it's a, a difficult matrix, it's a difficult balance to achieve because obviously you don't achieve productivity by having people all coming back together and spreading COVID around. That's not very productive. Jonathan Prior, councillor Prior, has made the point about effective use of time, so having meetings that don't require travel. And I would throw into the mix not having un, meetings unnecessarily face-to-face that could take place online. Um, and therefore reduce the number of unnecessary car journeys. I mean, I don't want to start quantifying that, but we declared a climate emergency, I think, as a council. And as councillors, I think it, uh, you know, it, it, it becomes us to set an example that we are not undertaking unnecessary car journeys that could be avoided by other modes of working. So the all, the point I'm trying to make is that there is quite a difficult balance to achieve between all the various aspects. And it's not just a case of getting as many people as possible back into the office. But Katie?
Thank you. Um, can I pick up on something you said about apprenticeships? That, um, I welcome the launch of the new website. Uh, my own personal experience is that particularly for young people, apprenticeships is a really popular choice. And we've had conversations before at this scrutiny board about the, the disconnect with employers telling us that they have vacancies that they can't fill. And yet there being a pool of particularly young people across the city who are really keen for an apprenticeship. So I really welcome that. Um, and I have a number of questions. The first one is that I was sent an email this morning promoting the website and the link to it is incorrect and, and it doesn't take me there. Um, and when I searched apprenticeship Leeds just in a search engine, I think it took me to the old one. So I don't, if it is live, um, there may be some problems that need ironing out. Um, and then the second one was in the reports, it says it was coming live in February, so I think you said it is. Um, and a promotional campaign is planned. So what would that involve? Uh, because I'd be really keen to share it. So will there be social media and, and things that we can actually promote to show people where to go? Oh, no, actually, there was another one. Um, the other one was, um, it, it, it says that there'll be uh, seventy employers have signed up to showcase their apprenticeship programme. As well as that, will there be a link to live apprenticeships so that people can actually find out what's available now by visiting the website?
So thanks for flagging the issues, councillor. I'll pass this on to the team and make sure we rectify them as soon as possible. Um, there's a, there's a whole algorithm you have to do to sort out the search engine stuff, but I'll, I'll check that we're on that to make sure that we're going to the new website and also perhaps clear about when we might be shutting the old website down. So thank you for that feedback. Um, the, on the social, on, on the promotional campaign, yes, I'm sure the team will have social media planned and so on. So what I'll do is I'll ensure that members are provided with that toolkit and updated through the usual member updates so that you can, so that you can promote that. So I'll also pick that up with the team. Um, and, um, I need to double check, but I'm pretty sure there are live apprenticeships on the website. But I'll, I'll confirm that in writing just to, to make sure I'm not telling you something that isn't accurate.
James?
Thank you, Chair. Um, just a quick question about, um, your, your initial point is that the economy is, um, is, um, showing signs of recovery and is now larger than it was in twenty nineteen. Uh, and we are seeing some, some growth. Presumably this is GDP that you're referring to, is, yeah. Um, on point, on point one, uh, national economic context, I'm, I'm presuming that, that we're referring to GDP there. Um, however, and, and as well as, you know, being some growth and consumer spending being, um, being up as well. Um, consumer spending is always impacted by house prices rising and, and it's likely that that's going to slow down as well as, of course, um, inflation as well. So i- is, is that accurate? And are we, and, and we've got to work with what, what we're given with and what, but do we take in, do we factor in that growth may slow down? And does that, do we change tact in, in those circumstances, especially I'm, I'm referring to consumer spending and things like the high street?
So, uh, what, what you're saying, I think, is, is what we might expect to happen in the next few months. So of course, with, with inflation rising, we would expect, um, as quite, as sort of reported by economic commentators in the news really as well, that you would expect that households will begin to spend less, um, at least on luxury items because of the costs, uh, other costs increasing. But the, the, the trends that, um, we saw just post-lockdown, however, was that because of the, the reference that was made to the increasing inequalities, actually people that were more affluent saved a lot of money during lockdown and have been spending, and have been spending that money in the economy. Um, and I suppose what, what people are looking to understand is whether that will continue or not, whether that will level out and what the overall trend will be in terms of consumer spending. Um, so I think it's something we'll need to watch at the national level and understand how that then might impact on things like our city centre in terms of footfall and spend. But certainly the retailers reported to us throughout sort of the second half of twenty twenty-one that whilst footfall across the city, as we measured it, was reduced, footfall in some of the, those centres was increased and basket spend also increased. So it's, it's one really for us to watch, I think, overall.
Um, I think what, what that really demonstrates is that kind of GDP and growth is quite a, it's quite a broad measure, it's quite a blunt instrument, there can be a lot going on beneath that initial figure. Uh, the economy may be growing, but as, um, Eve's saying, kind of spending patterns can change. Um, there can be, there's obviously a huge cost of living crisis. But if that means people are still spending all of their money, that means kind of the economy could still technically be growing while people are suffering. So it's, it's, it's useful to know kind of where the economy overall is in terms of size. But it's by no means the only measure we'd be looking at. It, it disguises a lot of kind of workings just beneath the surface.
Okay, thank you for that. Do any other board members have any questions? Yeah, Nicole?
Thanks, Chair. A very concise report, so just two comments really. Um, on page forty-five, point thirteen, in relation to empty retail units, I'd be interested to see the year before percentage pre-COVID on that. Um, and then at, uh, page forty-seven, um, in relation to Leeds campaign, is there a graphic that can be shared with members so we can spread that in our communities? Thanks.
So we do have that, I do have that number and I'll, I'll provide it in writing around the previous, previous year. And on the graphic, I'm, I'm not sure, but I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure we'll have social media, um, uh, content we're using. So we'll, it's saying in relation to the apprenticeship stuff, I'll make sure it comes out through a member of the updates.
Any other questions? If not, I will thank Jonathan and Eve for their attendance and contribution. And we'll move on to the next agenda item, the latest update on the housing mix report. Just to fill in while officers and the exec board member are taking their places. This obviously, as the report says, goes back to, um, an inquiry, the, a joint inquiry that we undertook some years ago. But basically the thrust of it is, are we as a city and a council getting the right properties in the right place at the right part price? And that obviously includes number of bedrooms, whether they're meeting specific housing needs, um, and, and the type of tenure. Right, I think everyone's now seated. So if you could start by introducing yourselves. And then, uh, I think Sarah is going to introduce each of the particular recommendation points as they, as they go. So introductions first.
I'll start, um, because I was late at the beginning. So I'm Helen Hayden, councillor for Temple Newsom and executive member for infrastructure and climate, which, um, as of May includes housing growth as well as the planning director. Thank you.
Martin Elliott, I'm head of strategic planning.
Hi, Sarah Halliwell, principal planner from Policy and Plan.
Hi, Krista Jolly, I'm an exec manager in regeneration.
Morning, Ian McKay, team leader in Policy and Plans.
Morning, Ian McKay, team leader in policy and plans.
Thank you Chair. Good morning. Just last but not least, as always. So obviously assuming that the report is read, we're going to go through each recommendation in turn and open up after this country councillor, which is all that will do questions at the end of each recommendation. As you can see, I've brought some colleagues along with me, so I won't do all the talking. And they are, they've contributed to the report that we've brought together for you. So I thought it may be more helpful to have the more expertise people here on certain things. So recommendation, recommendation three is that chief planning officer arranges for plans panel members to receive further information and training on best practice in dealing with scheme viability appraisals in collaboration with the Welsh Yorkshire authorities and the planning advisory service. The desired outcome is obviously to improve, improvement of elected member skills and knowledge. As you can see from the reports that the viability has taken, training has taken place. It was a virtual, virtual session with all members invited. And I think that's now part of the annual sort of training and I'm sure it was quite good. I've seen the presentation now, learnt a few things. And the, the last paragraph in the report that was discussed with councillor Chuswell is that it's sort of raising the issue about affordable housing and in viability and that a majority of, or it appears the majority of viability appraisals come either in the city centre or on brownfield sites. And obviously with affordable housing being the most costly, section 106 obligation. We just, I know that was a point that you wanted putting in the report Chair. So that's the end of recommendation three.
Sorry, there is a, my voice is probably booming enough to carry, but I know it won't, won't get recorded. There is a concern among some members that the use of viability has been employed by developers to get out of meeting the planning requirements, especially for affordable housing. So I think the board and no need to go into a huge amount of detail, would welcome some, some reassurance on that. Second point is that historically, we've always had quite a large figure relating to the number of brownfield sites that had planning permission but were not being built out. Because obviously there is the concern that developers really want to exploit greenfield sites in outer areas in particular and to build, you know, properties from which they derive lucrative profit. So I think it's those two elements. Where are we with the outstanding brownfield sites? Because obviously, you know, we would always as a council, and I think this is across the board, want a brownfield first approach as far as possible. And secondly, how robust is the system that is applied to claims of viability, which is now enshrined in law by developers?
Chair, I'll just come back on the, the housing land pipeline. I think whilst some point in the past, it, it may have been that there was a large amount of brownfield land sort of stuck in the housing pipeline. Our evidence shows that that's really no longer the case. A lot of that was flushed out by the last recession. And a lot of that was in the city centre and led to a little bit of a, sort of a desert in the city centre really, in terms of housing completions. That's now really changed and shifted. And we're finding that most of our completions are now happening within the city centre to complement and supplement those that are happening around the city. Sites that were released, greenfield sites released through the site allocations plan, which was adopted in, in 2019 are coming through, but we're actually finding that counter intuitively, they're actually taking the time to come through and actually start construction. So I do think it's, it's a healthy, reasonably balanced housing pipeline. And that's good for the council because it maintains its five-year housing land supply.
Thank you. On top of that, the team have worked really hard. And I go to the place regeneration, kind of finance at WICA to, to get finance to release the brownfield sites, to make them, to make them viable in terms of, you know, kind of contamination of the land and, and things like that. And Leeds has really worked hard to get that funding which comes through WICA. In order to, that those brownfield sites are viable and especially for affordable housing, which we were talking about in the, in the last item, was being talked about in the last item. So if, if they're not, if they're not, if they're far too expensive to clean up, then the chances of affordable housing being developed on them is much, much less. So the brownfield housing, brownfield lands funding has really, really helped, especially those city centre sites. And I've really had to fight because if you look at the, the list, that comment that was made earlier for councillor Bentley about everything coming to Leeds, that was said in, in, in the, in the meeting. And why is Leeds getting all this funding? Well, it's because we are putting a brownfield first policy and we are working really hard to secure that funding. So yes, we are getting more than the other authorities because we have that housing land supply and that, and, and the bids going forward. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. And, and just going back to the point about how robust the test is of claims of viability. The reason why I'm raising it is that it's something that has come up at boards year on year. And I just wanted to get an update on record on that and a reassurance for board members that, you know, it is a robust process.
Yeah, thanks councillor. So viability is allowed by national guidance. And when we were writing the policy for affordable housing, the inspector made us put a line in which said subject to scheme viability. The, the approach is dealt with through the planning application process whereby developers have to submit evidence. That evidence is scrutinised by the district valuer to ensure that it's, it stacks up and it's appropriate. And we are finding that there is a lot of viability appraisals being submitted to us off the back of a particular housing model, which is the build to rent model, which is, I think it's fair to say, still in its infancy within the city. It's, it's had a few years to get a foothold in Manchester and London. But on the one hand, the build to rent sector is what's driving the delivery of housing in the city centre. On the other, it's still feeling its way in, in terms of how to make that stack up viably within the Leeds market. And the margins are quite tight on that. That said, we are looking in more detail at scheme viability for build to rent. So as to assist us as a council in deciding, well, do we want to carry on with this type of product in the city centre if it is unable to deliver the appropriate housing that the city needs. So work is ongoing at the moment and we're working with Cushman and Wakefield to really interrogate the viability case strategically within the city centre to see whether or not we need to look at sort of managing that policy in a different way.
Okay, thank you, Martin. So the, we have to agree the position status on this. Clearly it's a report that goes back some years. And I think part of the problem is that the annual monitoring of past reports, the particular recommendations get a little outdated. But as with this, the issues remain just as important in the present. So can I suggest that we give this a four status, which is basically acceptable process, progress, but that we will continue monitoring and it just allows us to keep it on the agenda. Okay, thank you. So Sarah, moving on to the next recommendation.
Recommendation four is that the chief planning officer reports back to the relevant scrutiny boards on the implementation of successive proposed assessment guidance and other proposed actions around housing need assessment. I think looking through the report, this got HNA's and HMA's and things like that. It's got a bit over time. Obviously discussions have occurred and things have changed into HMA's. But I think just briefly before I introduce my colleague Krista, who was inputted into the report. Is that, obviously I know that housing need assessments are quite fundamental, especially linking it to policy H4 in terms of the text of the policies. I think that's probably where it's come from originally. Obviously, we were seeking some training and that contract ended with, with the company. So we are looking at, looking at doing it some more, looking to source some training on a housing need assessment for officers. Obviously, that's quite integral in terms of sites over 250, which obviously is quite key to the city centre. And then smaller areas, it's over, it's for 50 units or more. So we are aware that that's quite, that is a training need for us and that we are working on it. Because we know some of the key issues that come out from plans panels is, you know, they talk about supply a lot and what the demand is not, what for the long term need is. So we are really on that and fully aware of that. And we're going to try and, we will try and get some training. So I'll pass on to Krista now. Thank you.
Yeah, just to pick up on the housing market assessments that we undertake and we kind of commissioned those work through, through regeneration service in the past. And the housing market assessments is basically a set of data collation to look at where the, the housing market is in certain neighbourhoods. So the ones that we've done most recently are in Holbeck, Lincoln Green and Morley. With the Holbeck and Lincoln Green housing market assessments, looking to support our priority neighbourhood works in regeneration. And also the Morley work looking to support the, the towns fund work in Morley as well. These, these works are kind of really very data-driven kind of assessments. And it is to look at how we kind of target our resources, target funding bids and look at opportunities in the markets for, for housing and development. I think those housing market assessments have now been shared. Is that correct?
We found it quite hard to work out how to share such big megabytes. But I think the best way is that they are available and if maybe contact your team or if you give us a contact so that they can be made, can be accessible because they're not in the public domain, I don't think.
No, happy to share them. I think they are very, very data-driven. And if there's any questions on those, then you can please kind of forward those on to me.
Okay, thank you. Could I just ask the, the HMA's that have been completed, what consultation has taken place with local members and any wider consultation with the, with the community? My second question is the housing needs assessment, the HNA. I understand that there's currently a review taking place of that or is that a misunderstanding on my part?
I'll pick up the housing market assessments point. Those have, can be shared with members as they're requested. In terms of consultation or public consultation, we don't necessarily do that because it is a data collection exercise rather than kind of seeking views and opinions from kind of the public. So it is just something that we can share with members and the public as requested.
Okay, but it does contribute to the council's thinking around housing in a particular area. And therefore I would have thought at least ward member active involvement rather than passive involvement might be, might be helpful. But perhaps I'm wrong. Okay. And how, housing need, I mean, the reason I raise these issues is that housing, I think it's fair to say, right across the piece is one of the major concerns, both in terms of individuals and communities that we face as councillors. And obviously I think we have a legitimate input to make into those processes where the finished documentation, whatever it's called, has some influence on the trajectory of housing development in, in our particular areas.
In terms of housing need assessments, obviously they're generally linked to the policy itself in terms of, as I said earlier about the size and things like that. So obviously HNA's are supposed to, they're supposed to explain how they've come to that housing need, their, their housing mix for that scheme. Obviously that's linked to the strategic housing market assessment. I'm sure at some point that will be updated through local plan updates, obviously directed by members. So HNA's, it's more that we do, when we get them in, we do discuss them as officers because a lot of it is, oh, well, it's, it's, oh, well, the demand is this, this is what the estate agents are saying. So we are really challenging those. And I know that that hope that's coming across in, in our consultation responses and then also in, in plans panels that we are challenged. That actual policy itself, not the preferred table, is that it's the long-term need across all housing. So that is the actual policy. So we use those HNA's, but we're going to do some training and get some guidance, maybe have a standard template and things. That's sort of things we've got in the pipeline at the moment being discussed.
Okay, thanks. I think I'm just flying the flag for active member engagement and involvement wherever that's possible. If only for information so that we don't have to reactively have to go and seek it out when there is a particular controversial issue in our own wards.
Yeah. HNA's generally for us in terms of processing planning applications will come in as part of a, through a planning statement or an individual housing need assessment. So which obviously available as part of the, part of the online information through public access. So that's how that they come into us for assessment in terms of housing market assessments will come in, with driven buyers and data.
Okay, if there are no more questions or comments on this, can we make this one a four as well? So we can just continue the monitoring process on it. Okay, thank you. Recommendation five.
My colleague Ian McKay, who's the neighbourhood planning and engagement team leader, will update you where we are and also provide the position statement for you.
Thank you, Sarah. I think I'll, I'll refer you, I think, to appendix three and, and the outcomes, I think, would be the most appropriate place to touch on. We have 19, we now have 19 made neighbourhood plans in Leeds, which, which incidentally is more than the, than the whole of London. These range in variety greatly from, from small villages right through to inner city communities. And we're currently providing support to more than 15 other neighbourhood areas, many of which are in deprived communities as well. The Holbeck and Walton neighbourhood planning award, I mean, even though it was back in 2018, which is obviously some time ago, does continue to inspire quite a number of groups in the city. It does set a really good benchmark, especially the Holbeck plan, I think, in terms of actually the sustainability of neighbourhood planning in communities like Holbeck. Overall, we've got 310 policies in neighbourhood plans. Some of these have been quite successful. Some of, some of these have yet to be tested. But, but they do include things which really have made a big impact on communities. And I think one of these would be the local green spaces designation. Many people don't realise that local green spaces below point two of a hectare are not protected. So within many communities, especially the urban communities, those smaller green spaces are really important. And neighbourhood planning is a, is a great opportunity to offer protection to those spaces. So 310 is quite a significant number of spaces across, across the district. 205 non-designated heritage assets as well. That doesn't mean protection, however. That just means that these are important assets and must be considered in any development proposals. Where we are now is on a pilot programme, which has just started and just recently been introduced by the government. There's two aspects to that programme. One is encouraging more neighbourhood planning in deprived communities. And the other is the simplified form of neighbourhood planning. We're involved in the latter. And I'm pleased to say that Bathgate, Hair Hills, Chapel Town and potentially other communities in Leeds will be taking part in that pilot. So there's a lot of, a lot of good learning, a lot of lessons to be learned. And, and of course, some things that we perhaps wouldn't do again. And we've had 10 years of learning on neighbourhood planning. And, and I think hopefully the thing that will come out of future neighbourhood plans will be an attention to climate change. Because many of the plans that we have in the city were formulated before many of the recent discussions around the climate change agenda. Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, Ewan. Jonathan.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ian, for that. And I do think these neighbourhood plans are important for communities of all shapes and sizes. But I think what the report doesn't demonstrate, which I think really is at the basis of quality neighbourhood plan, is the turnout on the referendums of these, of these plans from memory, when I've seen, when I've asked the question previously and I've seen the answer. The turnout of these referendums are overwhelmingly low. And even in, when the Horstworth one was adopted, and in Horstworth, we have an active community interested in planning, interested in development. For the site allocations plan, I believe that Horstworth generated the most responses for award to the site allocation plan. And yet, we barely scratched the minimum requirement for turnout to get the neighbourhood plan adopted. So what are we doing for areas where, where communities have maybe less of an interest in planning to ensure that we are getting through to people, that people are looking at and reading as best as anyone can understand what, with planning terms and all the rest of it, that they're accessible and that turnout is actually increasing because I'd be, I'd like to see actually the turnout for the various ones where they started previously. And hopefully, we're seeing better engagement as the city develops more of these. So I think that will be worth putting in these reports. And I think it'd be worth sharing with with the board as well, turnouts year on year for different ones, to make sure that we're getting an upward trend of engagement.
Thank you for that. That's helpful feedback. I mean, the turnout that we've had in Leeds so far has varied from about 14% right up to 66%. So it has been, it's quite difficult to generalise, but in many cases, the turnout has been higher than it has been for local elections. In other cases, it's been below that level. So it does, it's quite difficult to understand why that is. And in terms of, in terms of the actual referendum itself, there are some very strict rules in place in terms of what the council can do to promote a referendum. But I think the main, the main indication is that if communities feel that they have been properly involved in the neighbourhood planning process and they recognise the issues in that neighbourhood plan, then they're more likely to turn out and vote and then more likely to vote yes. In terms of the pilot programme, we are exploring or going to explore potential alternatives to the referendum. Is there a process that could be more inclusive? Is there a process that could offer options to different types of communities in terms of, in terms of the end of the neighbourhood planning process? And I think that's a really interesting area that's worthwhile exploring.
Thank you, Chair. I do get what you're saying. And I think it's the higher turnout places, I think, will be concentrated areas like Boston Spa, which have maybe a more affluent and, dare I say, educated community who are probably more active in planning matters such as defending the green belt, that sort of thing. So there's already an interest there. And I think it's more difficult for potentially in a city areas to get that motivation. And I think that's, that is where we need to concentrate because they may not be the same issues, but planning does affect everyone wherever they are. And getting that engagement is really important. So I do think we need to do better. I think the turnouts aren't presented as a standard because I think it might look as though the quality of it is compromised with low turnout, whether or not it's met the statutory turnout that needs to be, to be adopted or not. I think, I think that is something that we do need to look at and make sure that all communities are involved in decisions as best as possible. And whether or not we can promote the referendum as such, there is a lot of work that can be done before that time to ensure that communities are involved and have access to, to as much information as possible to get them involved in the process.
Ian, before you come in, Helen, before Ian responds, just so that we've got a fix on this. Is the council simply a facilitator of the referendum or does it have a role in promoting the plan? Because my understanding is that the plans come from a group that hopefully will reflect the community and hopefully will engage the community and will hopefully promote that plan. But, you know, just where does the council's role when it comes to the referendum begin and end?
It is purely as a facilitator, Chair. We have no role in promoting the referendum. And it's making sure that it's run properly. That is the main, the main rule. In terms of the group themselves, they can of course promote the referendum, but they have to be careful in how, in how they do that. There are some rules around referendums for neighbourhood planning, which are actually the same for any, any referendum.
So just to be clear, I might be being a bit obtuse here. It is the role of those putting the plan forward to promote it and not the council. And one wonders whether in some cases, the low turnout is a result of the failure to engage. And Jonathan makes a point, you know, clearly a number of communities, they do not fall over themselves individually or collectively to engage in this sort of process. But then the point that he made about whether it actually represents a lower community is a difficult one. But it's not the council's role to determine that purely to act as an administrative facilitator of the, of the referendum. I mean, presumably, you can point groups in the direction of good practice and examples of where groups in similar communities have undertaken the promotion, but we can't actually do it ourselves.
If I could come in on that point, I think even a general election, we'd be happy with 66% turnout. And getting people to turn out and vote is, is very, very difficult. And as it's been clarified there, it's not actually, and the role of the council to promote the referendum. In fact, if we look at all of these plans, they would not, they would struggle to be in existence if it wasn't for the hard work and support and relationship building from Ian and his team. And I just want to thank, thank them for that because we are an outlier as a city in terms of our neighbourhood planning. And again, it's something I've been really impressed with in the last year of coming into this. But if we look at the Holbeck, correct me if I'm wrong, Ian, but it was really bad snow that day and they still managed to get people, people still came out and voted and it passed the criteria, didn't it, in terms of the threshold? So I want to thank the people of Holbeck on that very, very snowy day. I remember, I remember that weather. And, you know, to come out and vote on what is a, a planning issue is really impressive for that community. And also to go in, you know, people around Leeds are very passionate about planning in very diverse areas. So Ian and his team attended a meeting in Hair Hills, we're looking this year, and the passion was overwhelming. And in fact, people in tears, so passionate about, about Hair Hills and their local community. And, you know, it's not just about preserving, it's about good development and, and taking that area on forward in the future. So, yeah, I'd say that people are very involved. And, and that's incredibly impressive throughout the, throughout the city.
Jonathan, do you want to come back? I suppose what I was just seeking was clarification as to who's responsible for a low turnout? Because the implication was it was somehow the council.
Thanks, Chair. To be clear, I mean, I understand that, I do understand that the council, and I, before I made the comment, I understand the council is just the facilitator of the referendum. But we have an engagement team in Ian's job title, if I remember rightly from the start. Part of it is engagement manager or something along those lines. And it is the work that is done. And I'm not diminishing the work that you, you and your team do by any stretch of the imagination. Because even though a lot of people care about this subject and say that they care about this subject, I do take the point that it's incredibly difficult. And we all know it's incredibly difficult to get people out, to vote on anything at all, to get them motivated to vote. So I'm in no way diminishing that. But I do think we need to, we do need to look at the turnout levels and make sure that we are seeing hopefully an upward trend so that if there is something that we can learn, that we can take forward to the next round of plans that are coming forward, we're seeing improvements and more engagement. And for me, the only way we can see and measure a better engagement is the level of turnout. So I'd hope it's not coming as sort of an attack on the council because that's not how I wanted it to come across. But I do think it's important from the, from the responses I've had to my questions that we have a little bit of reflection and say that there is lessons that possibly can be learned and there is work that we can do to try and increase the level of engagement and turnout at these, at these things. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll take that as a comment. And the final comment that I will throw in from the chair is that I suspect that participation depends on being able to convince people that their participation is worthwhile and that neighbourhood plans are actually worth the paper on which they're printed. And I just leave that as a rhetorical observation because I know that some people have been disappointed as to what they can achieve and what they can't. Jonathan.
I was tempted to let you wind up and go on to the next one, but it's a question I, I did. And soon I won't be here for much longer if you just indulge me with this question. Yes, yeah, I hope so, yeah. On neighbourhood plans, is there any plan to do evaluations of them? As a, as a neighbourhood plan sceptic, it'd be good to see in fullness of time, when a neighbourhood plan's been around for a while, what benefit has accrued to the, to the community that they wouldn't have got had the neighbourhood plan not been there. So, you know, some tests of effectiveness and, yeah, just looking at sort of have a member for neighbourhood plans opportunities.
Yeah, very much so. I mean, I've actually taken part in the government's recent review of neighbourhood planning alongside the University of Reading. And that, the results of that piece of work very much reflected what's going on in Leeds. And that is quite clearly, you cannot generalise about neighbourhood planning. You know, the key lesson to come out of the past 10 years is that every neighbourhood, every neighbourhood is different. Every neighbourhood is trying to achieve something different. And the contrast in Leeds is quite, is quite significant. Councillor Hayden mentioned Hair Hills. And so far, the benefit of neighbourhood planning to them is the opportunity to come together as a community because they haven't had a community group previous to neighbourhood planning. That in itself is highly valuable in terms of social capital. If you look at Walton, for example, small village, just over 100 homes, but yet that neighbourhood plan has allocated three sites to meet local housing needs. And, you know, planning applications have come in for all of these already. So it's very much different things for different communities. And, and I think it relates in some way to, you know, an interesting statistic around neighbourhood planning. In Leeds, there are about roughly 3,000 people who are members of neighbourhood planning groups. Many thousands that have taken place, taken part in neighbourhood planning engagement and consultation events during the preparation of the plan. So in some ways, it's not just about the, the turnout is actually about the engagement and about the consultation. And that in itself is a really important indicator of building up capacity and understanding, not just about neighbourhood planning, but actually in terms of the other planning work that we're doing in the city. When communities have a successful neighbourhood planning experience, they're more likely to take part in other council, planning consultations that we're undertaking. But I'm more than happy to come back to scrutiny on those review questions, in particular around the pilot programme that we're just about to be looking at and will be taking on board many of those issues that have been raised.
Thank you, Ian. That's, that's very helpful. And anything that taxes a vehicle to increase public knowledge of the planning process, I think is to be welcomed in its own right because we all know that so many of our constituents think that the council is the be all and end all and has absolute discretion over what it, what it approves and what it doesn't. And, you know, people find it very sober when they learn just how many constraints we operate under. Okay, thank you for that. Could I suggest that we, we move on and that we give that again a four so that we continue? I think this discussion has demonstrated the value of us continuing to look at this either as part of the annual monitoring or maybe separately at some stage. Okay, thank you. So that takes on, I think, page 77, recommendation eight. Sarah.
Yep. Recommendation eight is that the chief planning officer reports back to the appropriate scrutiny board the improvements to housing mix achieved through the practice of discussing mix at pre-application stage. Get my teeth in, sorry. And the desired outcome is that housing mix is discussed or developed at the earliest opportunity. Now, I hope that the tables and the stats in the, in the report show that progress is being made each year. I know there's lots of information there and lots of lines in tables, but obviously, housing mix goes back to the, to the core strategy adopted in 2012, I think it was, from memory. So we think that's highlighted some really positive and significant changes. In terms of housing mix, we are at the earlier stage through pre-applications and pre-applications. And also noted that at plans, all across the plans panels, it's being raised as a real key area. Recently, at City Centre Plans Panel at the Latitude B site, that was really pushed as an agenda to get more three-bed units, which is a really positive thing. I think that was an application, but I know that lots of pre-applications are going. So we do believe that we are making a positive change and that we are improving the housing mix across the district. Table one shows that the data across the city district is skewed, obviously, by including the city centre. And previously, we have included now the city centre excluded, so to speak, from stats and on their own. Now we have tables one A and B, which I just said exclude the city centre and one for the city centre only. Table one A shows that not including the city centre stats that there's been a significant increase in the delivery of two-bed units, which has been an area of concern raves previously. And also, the table shows that the delivery of four plus bedrooms has come down significantly, which was raised as a concern previously also. Table one B purely the city centre shows it, shows obviously a lot of one-bedroom units. And this is to be expected, taking into account the context of student accommodation, student studio flats and the permitted development rights for change of use of offices to residential, which we have absolutely no control over. As I said earlier, that all three plans panels are really pushing the agenda of housing mix. And that we are getting, trying to achieve sometimes one less, slightly less one and two and more three-bed units, particularly in the city centre. So I think overall table two A shows that even though it's only six months' data, and obviously, we've coming through a strange period of time, that this shows that significant progress has been made on two, three and four-bed units. Any update that will possibly coming is potentially through a local plan update too, which will obviously look at housing, obviously led by members, and will be brought back to scrutiny board on any proposed scoping for housing in the future. I'm now going to pass to my colleague Krista on the affordable housing elements of the report.
Thank you. Table four in the report shows affordable housing completions over the last eight years. You can see there that about 50% of delivery is coming through RP partners, that's our registered provider partners in the city, with 25% through section 106 delivery and 25% through council housing programmes through direct delivery. Last year, it's really positive that we've got, we delivered just under 600 affordable homes in the city, which is the highest it's been for 10 years or even more than that, which is a real positive impact in terms of Homes England funding coming forward. And also the strategic partnerships that Homes England now have with a number of RP partners in the city now starting to take place and take some momentum in that area. Section 106 delivery has been slightly lower than the previous two years, which is largely a result of a lot of the housing being delivered in the city centre in the areas where we've got 7% affordable which is largely a result of a lot of the housing being delivered in the city centre in areas where we've got 7% affordable housing requirement rather than the 35% areas. But we're expecting that to change over the future years as we come forward. Just to really pick up some of the detail in this, in terms of our housing need, the Strategic Housing Market Assessment outlines that we require 1,230 affordable homes per annum. And that's broken down with an in-year need of 434 homes per annum. And then a backlog need which we need to meet because of not being able to deliver the numbers in previous years. And I'll let Martin come on to any more detail on that if we need it. Just to note then, looking at that kind of in-year need, obviously with delivering 595 homes last year, we're actually meeting our in-year need, which is really positive. And moving forward, looking to the future, we are looking to deliver further homes, about 700 being projected in our pipeline per annum for the next few years. We've recently undertaken some work with our RP partners to look at what we call in the Leeds Affordable Housing Challenge, which is really looking to unlock housing delivery in the city and try and meet that need of 1,230 homes. And in that work, we've started to look at what the key barriers and risks are. And one of the, well, three of the key things really are, one, land availability. That's not to say that we've not got a land supply in the city. We have, but it's about the availability of that land for affordable housing delivery. And our RP partners and ourselves as council providers for a direct delivery, being able to access that land. The second challenge for providers is really around making sure that we can get the homes to be as affordable as possible. And the issue with construction prices going up has had a significant impact. And our providers and ourselves are trying to make sure that we don't pass on that to our residents to make sure that homes can still be provided at social rent and affordable rent, and there's not a rent increase. And I think the other key things are making sure that we use our funding unlocking funding successfully in the city. So as councillor Hayden said, around the Brownfield Housing Fund, how we use our commuter sums part to really kind of unlock those opportunities. Make sure that we're looking at different delivery models and moving of the times really to ensure that we are delivering as much as possible as we can in the city. Just looking at our own council housing growth programme, there's details of that programme in the report. But just to highlight really that there's currently 268 homes on site and 200 more due to be on site in 2022. There's a number of schemes also in the pipeline and the whole of the programmes looking towards delivering 1,500 homes by 2025. And we're significant way to achieving that. Just wanted to highlight as well within the report, some of the key schemes that are coming forward for our RP partners, such as the Guinness Point Cross Scheme, which is delivering 311 affordable homes in the city centre. And we're hoping to see more of that come through the pipeline in the next three years. As part of our Affordable Housing Challenge, we really want to have that as an affordable housing delivery plan that sets out that pipeline of delivery. And we're happy to share that as that evolves over the next few months with scrutiny board. I just wanted to highlight on the appendix four there, it asked for a list of sites that were 100% affordable housing over the next last three years. The appendix four actually, I think, just lists all affordable housing delivered. And I just wanted to highlight that actually, if we split that out in 2019, 20, 184 homes were provided through 100% affordable housing sites. And then 2020, 21, 336 homes were provided of 100% affordable housing sites, which equates to 520 homes over those two years. And we anticipate that to increase more, as I said, in the future pipeline as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wordsworth.
I think Martin might be expecting this. Bottom of page 79, where it talks about the table being created for the city centre. And then in table 1B on 80, there is a table for the city centre. And with regards to the three-bedroomed properties there, we are miserably not achieving 30% with only the 3%. And your colleague relates to the last plans panel with the Latitude Site, where it became pretty much an auction with regards to them saying, will we get it if we go to 10%? And some members saying yes, some members saying no, some members saying they don't care. And, you know, they did go to 10%. Now some members are saying that's set the precedence. I doubt it. And also looking at the three bedrooms, how they fit in to the development and into the city centre. Because I want to push for family properties, don't get me wrong. But what you can actually get with three bedrooms, and we never get any four bedrooms, but what you would almost certainly get with four bedrooms is that they will be bought by a bi-select developer, who then let them off per room. And that's worse than having more single-bedroomed properties, which are just sort of to single people. So, you know, it has to fit within the development and it has to fit within the city centre and be right, not just fit into this table. And I think that's where panel members are a bit at sea with it, because we want the things to be right. But we're also pushing for what we think is more family homes, but do we actually get more family homes? And I have to say, with the last plans panel, officers weren't helping. Officers clearly wanted that to go through as it was, and the developer wanted to go through as it was. And he had to consult with his colleague whether they could actually build it and deliver it. And in the end, they did to get an application approved. But you do wonder whether an application approved actually builds that site out, as we would like it to be built out. So I think we do have to get some sort of clarification around that. Sorry to go on, Chair.
I think in sum, the policy was developed back in 2012 and it was adopted in 2014. And that policy seeks a mix across Leeds, not necessarily a 30% target in the city centre for three-bed houses, a 30% target across the district. With, and I think the wording's in the policy, that there'll be some circumstances, such as in the city centre, where you wouldn't be expecting to achieve that target. But stepping away from the numbers, I think the achievement of family accommodation in the city centre as an objective is a good one. And that's what we're trying to achieve with this. Whether we're trying to achieve it with a policy that isn't quite doing what we'd like it to do or say what we'd like it to say, I think is important. And we're coming up to a period now where we're scoping local plan update two, as Sarah said, where I actually think that it would be really helpful if we recommended to members that housing mix were a part of that local plan update, because a lot's changed since 2014. The nature of the development in the city centre has changed. As I say, we've got a very active build-to-rent sector in the city centre, but they're only building for a particular demographic. We've got co-living schemes that are emerging within the city centre. But again, they're only building for a particular demographic and they're not going to look at delivering family housing. So I think it's probably, and I think that's why in terms of trying to implement the policy, you can only go as far as what's written in the policy. You can't try and make the policy do something it doesn't say, which I think is where, sort of whilst we've tried to implement this differently and more effectively, we're probably getting to a point now where we say, well, actually, I think the policy probably needs to change to achieve what we want it to achieve. And I think the second thing is that whilst whilst those points hopefully you can accept, in the meantime, there's been an awful lot of place-making going on in the city centre to change the nature of the city centre through Greater Green, through the city spaces strategy, through investing in spaces and providing schools and services in the city centre or vicinity, to be able to attract the family offer that I think members are constantly asking us to try and achieve. So I hope that helps. And I think probably now it would be really helpful if we could move on to, well, what does the policy actually need to say if that's our ultimate objective in terms of diversifying the city centre market?
Yes, sorry, just to add to that, I mean, I think Martin's absolutely right that the city centre is overtaking the policy. And with the other things that are going on, so if you go down to the situ site, that's very much family housing. And, you know, and they've got people from four months to 94 living in there, and that's what they want to achieve. The build-to-rent, it's not all one-bedroom for a certain, and the Quarry Hill site or Soyo, as I'm supposed to call it, there are three-bedroomed apartments and they're proper-sized bedrooms. I was, I was quite surprised you could live as a family in one of those apartments quite happily. So I think with the city park, with everything greening up. And when I've walked around in lockdown, down by the canal, there are already families living in these apartments. And, you know, sitting on the green spaces outside with their children. So I think we have to look at that policy and see whether it's actually fitting the needs of the city centre now.
I think, I wouldn't disagree with councillor Hayden. I won't ever disagree with councillor Hayden, as you know. But I wouldn't disagree with what she's just said. I just think that at plans panels, the policy needs to reflect what you want us to do. Because we had, that last panel, we had officers saying one thing, members a little bit split. And a developer who said he had been assured he was policy compliant, but actually clearly wasn't policy compliant, because he was way away from being policy compliant. And members couldn't understand why he thought he was. But he thought he was because he thought that the 30% didn't apply to him in the city centre, which clearly doesn't apply to him in the city centre. I mean, you wouldn't have had this issue if you'd been building this development in Wetherby, because they'd all been three-bedroomed. It would have been the other way. I think that the policy just needs to guide members as to where to go. Because as I say, we now, or some members now seem to think that 10% is the policy for the city centre. And the next applicant came along with a pre-app, and we said it's a pity you weren't in at the previous application. And they said, we were watching it on YouTube. We are exactly the discussion that's been had. And so they've gone away to think about that. But when they come back with an application, it's a case of whether they've thought, whether they've been guided, and whether members think they've done enough thinking. That's the issue that you have to decide when you're trying to bring a compliance scheme that is a right scheme to fit in. I mean, there were also comments about that scheme, that the play areas and things weren't big enough. And of course, the developer highlighted that they were big enough for what he'd proposed as family housing. And so it's just around getting a clarity, which is what I'm really asking for out of this policy.
I fully appreciate that. And I think actually what that shows is really positive about the power of plans panels and the power of members and their opinions. But you have to have that backing of the correct policy. And yeah, we need to address that then, don't we? Sorry, Matt.
Thanks councillor Hayden. No, that's fine. Chair, and the policy, the uppercase policy in the plan says that an appropriate housing mix should be delivered. The difficulty we've got is that those numbers and those targets aren't in that uppercase policy. And if you're wanting to secure something through law that's risk-free, taken through a planning appeal, it needs to be in the uppercase part of the policy. So the difficulty we've got is trying to almost retrofit the justification to the policy, which is in the supporting text, into the uppercase part of the policy and put more weight on it, if you like. But in discussing an appropriate mix, members at panels have increasingly been talking about the desire to get more and more three-bed properties into city centre schemes. And developers are, as the stats show, starting to slowly do that. And also developers in terms of out of the city centre, one of the big concerns was about the lack of two-bed properties in the outer areas. And we can see from these stats that, again, that's starting to turn. But I accept that the policy will, given the opportunity to review it, need to be a lot more specific about what's desired and where.
Sorry, Chair, I need to go for another meeting now. Is that okay?
Yes. Thank you for your attendance, councillor Hayden. Martin. Okay, you don't want to come back. I think we then got councillor Bentley.
Thanks, Chair. You mentioned, sort of very briefly in passing, use of commuted sums as one of the funds you use. Do you know of the affordable houses that were built, say, 2021, how much of that was funded out of commuted sums? And so it would be useful to have a very brief explanation of how commuted sums are used. I'll tell you an example. In my ward, we have a local developer who's just developed, or is in the process of developing an extremely good build-to-rent scheme, include family homes, flats and whatever on Brownfield Site. Part of the condition was that he provided affordable housing on-site. He appealed that and the inspector said he could give a commuted sum instead. And I offline, informally, had a bit of a go at him, saying, you know, we need affordable homes in my ward. And he said, what are you worried about? He said, I've given the council £2 million, whatever it was, the commuted sum. Spend that in your ward, you know, and it's just getting that link between commuted sums and the ward where it reiterates and how we then make sure that the intention, which is to have affordable homes provided by the 106 from that developer, is actually achieved. And it's not just sat in a big reserve in the council. It'd be interesting to know how much we have on our balance sheet as commuted sums.
Yeah, thanks for that. And I think commuted sums is a fund that we can use quite flexibly in the council. Where we've got Homes England funding all our right-to-buy replacement programme, we can't match those funds together. Because they're both classed as kind of government funding. And where we've got commuted sums, we can actually use it to match with Homes England funding and right-to-buy receipts. So we can use it quite flexibly to unlock delivery and kind of really address some of those viability cases. In the vast majority of cases, commuted sums does go into a central pot for the city to be used towards strategic priorities. But there is opportunity to ring-fence sums. I think where sums are then ring-fenced towards, it's helpful whether it's a big pot of money to be able to do that. We have got instances where we've had commuted sums ring-fenced towards, and it's only been less than £100,000, in which case we find it really difficult then to use that funding to support kind of a scheme, because it's only a small amount. So I think there's pros and cons in terms of ring-fencing to wards or putting into a city centre pot. And we can provide the detail of what we currently have in a ward level and what we've currently got in a city centre pot to the board. Off the top of my head, I think there's about £5 million that we have as a city that's actually sitting there in the bank. And we have got a pipeline of schemes as officers, really, in consultation with councillor Hayden as the exec member lead, that we are looking to spend funds on as they come through. £5 million obviously is not a lot of money if we're going to buy a scheme or way into a scheme, but it is helping us support some schemes. And in November 2018, there was an exec board approval to support the delivery of two sites at St Cecilia Street and Railway Street, which were council-owned sites for the ring-fencing of 100% affordable housing on those sites through our registered provider partners. And we are using some of the commuted sums, I think in the region about £2 million, to support the delivery of those two sites, which one of the sites is currently in planning, which is Railway Street, the other one is soon to be in planning. And between them, they should be delivering about 150 affordable homes as 100% housing sites in the city centre. So that's an example of where we can use it strategically as a part of funding to support delivery. But I take the point in terms of making sure that we spread that and make sure that the need is met within wards as well. But we can provide that information.
Do you want to come back, Jonathan, or?
Sorry, I can't see from here.
All right, sorry councillor, but I think Krista just said the point I was going to make actually, which is we can provide the information. That's currently been gathered by Jonathan Carr's service to look at that link between planning application, commuted sum, section 106, so that members can follow the money.
That's fine. It's just that transparency, I think, which is required. Thanks.
No, I think you make a good point councillor Bentley. And I think it will be useful for us to know how often commuted sums are used instead of the provision of the affordable housing on-site. And I think you've touched upon one of the other concerns, Krista, where that commuted sum doesn't actually buy the number of properties that could or should have been provided on that site. And then there's the other issue of trying to achieve an onsite mix of tenure, which has always been, you know, one of the approaches that we've adopted as a council. I've got three quick observations. And one is a reiteration of a point that I've made on several occasions. Page 82, the table at the top. Page eighty two, the table at the top, that final line, the range. So we've got a ten percent target but a range of naught percent to fifty percent. I really do not understand the value of that figure and what it means and what, you know, and how useful it is and why we even have it, because it just seems to say, well, here's the bar. But actually, we're going to lower it almost to the ground in some cases. So what's that, what is it all about? Second question is, do we have any figures for the number of properties that have been converted from offices to residential through the permitted development? And my third question, it relates to the top of page eighty four, the first bullet point, the end of the Homes England Affordable Housing Programme. Is that being replaced by another rolling programme or not?
Sorry, I'm just trying to find the reference in the page. Was it the top bullet point, did you say, under the table four, is that? Yeah, and I think this sort of, thank you councillor, just I think you've all sort of put things into a bit clarified our perspective maybe on H four. It sort of links to recommendation nine this about how to implement policy or regarding the implementation of it. We've drafted, redrafted, I have, it's been the vein of my life through Covid. So it's a, as we, it comes across today, it's a very hard policy to to put into words and guidance. And but I think it's times gone by, clarification is becoming more evident. And I think some of the words that Martin uses, it's hard, it's trying to fit it round and stuff like that. But the updated evidence, it's not quite as updated now, is that we are aiming more for the targets. But the bottom line is, is that we are really pushing it with all our colleagues across the whole range of DM teams. And I think we are making progress, but an absence of a note doesn't mean I don't think we are making progress. But as you say, people are going straight to the targets, which is preferred mix across the district. But the ranges, I don't think totally makes sense. There's no mean or anything like that. You can go from nothing to. So we are going to be, we are pushing through all of our consultation responses. We are talking about the monitoring and what we're presenting to you and our statistics are showing how, you know, we haven't got the right mix and this, that and the other, and how the city centre skews it. So we are working very hard in to get that and we are pushing the targets. And that should be the starting point, but obviously can't rewrite a policy that's there and live. And that's where the hard part is. But I think you can see like it's gone, the plans panel, when we talked about it, it says ten percent. Well, actually it's thirty percent, but you know, we're going slowly, steadily in the right direction. But we understand the key about that and that the guidance eventually will sort of say, you know, start off the targets. But that is what we're saying in all our policy responses. And then it's, and the bottom line is, is that it's not what supply is or what they believe demand is, it's about the long term need. And that is the part of the policy we're pushing completely.
Councillor, just in terms of the permitted development, housing that comes sort of outside of the planning system. We're seeing about on average twelve schemes a year, delivering around sort of two hundred and fifty homes into the city. That's based on monitoring. I haven't monitored the last two years yet, but I can certainly bring that back to a future meeting if you'd like.
And just on the last point then, around the, I suppose, the ebb and flow of the affordable homes programme that Homes England provides. What we see in terms of trends is that towards the back end of affordable homes programme, and there's a kind of real influx in delivery and that's why we get that kind of high peak at the end of those programmes. So I think it was a two thousand and sixteen to twenty twenty one programme, which obviously ended last year, which we've seen a kind of significant kind of peak in kind of delivery. Having said that, Homes England have changed the way that they're allocating funding through their programmes now. They've now got longer term strategic partnerships with partners, which delivers a five year programme of investment alongside continuous market engagement. So in the future, we shouldn't see that kind of ebb and flow of people kind of being able to get bids ready to go into programmes and kind of work through, kind of wait for programmes to be up and running before they can bid into them. So you wouldn't get that ebb and flow in the same way in future.
Okay, I mean, the reason for the question was whether this government funding part was going to continue. You say it's going to continue in a different way, but what its impact would be on our ability to deliver affordable homes in the city.
Yeah, and it is due to continue. So, yep.
Okay, and I have to say, as far as the range is concerned, I really, it was a great effort, but I really didn't follow it or understand it, because it just actually to the layperson looks utterly ludicrous. You know. Well, that's right, we'll do. Sorry, go on, go on, Martin.
In short, it comes down to our policies need to be flexible. We can't be so prescriptive, so as to put every developer in every situation to a particular.
I suppose, I mean, I don't want to protract this discussion, but, you know, if it was plus or minus ten percent or plus or minus fifty percent, you might think, well, we've got to allow a degree of latitude. But a degree of latitude between naught and fifty percent for a ten percent target, you know, just looks crazy. But anyway, points made, move on. Right, so if we can give that a position status of four and move on, hopefully very quickly, given the time, to recommendation nine on page eighty six. I think to some extent, we've covered this really, haven't we?
I sort of hope that I've sort of tried to cover that. They're sort of very linked really. As I said, that we are pushing it massively, there's an agenda, we're using the monitoring, we're pushing them, we're saying that that's the policy. But obviously historically, it's been sort of used, just that people go straight to the policy. So that's been our sort of key agenda through the last two years, really pushing that through consultations, obviously keeping working. And I think that is making difference, but obviously, as I said, as you say, the range is, you know, it's retrofitting. It's, I have to try and work out how to, I've written a note on how to implement the present policy. And I don't think in the absence of the public, in the public domain, I don't. I think we are making progress on those discussions we have with our colleagues in DM, so continue will work.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Do anyone, any questions? No, right. Shall we give that a four and then move on? So recommendation ten.
Yeah, so recommendation ten, the director of environment, housing, the chief planning officer. It's for a more coherent and detailed approach to identifying the need for specialist accommodation. Now this can be met and report back to the relevant scrutiny board and the outcome, desired outcome is development of policy, identifying and meeting specialists. Obviously, we've got a, the course strategy was obviously adopted in twenty fourteen, correct? Thanks, Martin. And then obviously we've had the course strategy review, which key ones are H nine, which is obviously space standards and H ten. We also have H eight in the policy, which is for older persons, I think that's the right, older persons. I want to make sure I'm correct in my terminology. So, so those are being used and that comes in, it's an over fifty, but obviously collectively, there's a number of issues about housing policies that obviously maybe we'll take forward in the local plan update. In terms of policy H ten, I think that's key, that these are now embedded at these space standards. So we've got time, we've got data to do proper assessment and analysis, which I understand will be coming in through the annual monitoring report. And also access to our accessibility officer, who is, in my opinion, fantastic. She's really good, she's engaged in all pre-apps and applications on accessibility, that's a lot of work for one person, but she does respond. Obviously, there's always caveats on certain policies for viability. But we will be able to provide that evidence through the AMR. And obviously we'll take a view in local plan updates of whether or not there's more discussion. Obviously bungalows are key. I think I've seen a scheme recently come through that's got bungalows on it. I'm a bit excited momentarily, might not have them at the end, but.
Run up the flag.
You know.
So are you saying, Sarah, that we're now in a position to collect data that will indicate how effective policies H nine, H ten are being in providing specialist housing to meet special needs?
Yeah.
Or specialist needs, should I say?
I am, yeah.
Great.
In fact, I've probably picked it up, I think. We've, we've, we've resourcing, we've lost staff, but now we're reallocating all the work. So, yeah, that's, I think, me now.
Okay, no questions or comments on this. Can we give this a four? And thank the officers and in her absence councillor Hayden for her attendance. Thank you very much. Agenda item ten is just the usual work programme. I don't think anyone will have any points on this, so can we just agree?
Times change so much, why we go from Wednesday to Thursday, ten till ten thirty.
Over to Becky.
And it's purely down to the availability of six and seven usually, because, and particularly in February, and it's a short month. We've had three scrutiny board meetings this week and plans panel. So unfortunately, the scheduling just meant that we had to be a little bit flexible. The time's due to a subsequent meeting and the need for six and seven.
When the chair is available, but the chair exercises a lot of latitude, but basically, no, not me, go, it's down to.
I do try to keep it as consistent as possible.